Yes, I will.
Yes, I will.
She is in New York. She is on an excuse that... Now, if I turn this into a suit vote, we don't want it to go out the other way. I'll turn this to him and you can turn it to everybody.
There he is. It is, yep.
Councillors, take their seats, please. Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Newburgh City Council Work Session for April 2nd, 2018. And I would like to welcome our Planning Commission that is going to be joining us for this work session. We will move...I'll bring in the Chair in just a few minutes on that. So, but I would like a roll call for the City Council, please.
Mr. Mayor, all present, with the exception of Council President Denise Bacon.
And that is an excused absence. She is in the state of New York. Are there anything on the consent calendar from the council? Any other business items that you need to have any clarification on before we go into the business section? And anything for council business? Forever now or speak your piece? Where's the city attorney? There you go. Nothing for council business at this time? I have one item. Okay, that will take up later. So with that, before we continue on with the business, I will turn the mic over to our President of our Planning Commission, Mr. Phil Smith.
This is a joint meeting, so I'm calling the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. And so we'd like to have a roll call of members present.
Chair Phil Smith.
Present.
Commissioner John, forgive me if I murder your name. Wishchick?
As long as there's food connected, isn't it?
And Commissioner Jason Dale.
Here.
And the rest are absent at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we're delighted to have you here. We have a, I think, before all of you, you have a little list of discussion topics. And with that, since I am kind of on the outside looking in, I'm going to look to, I think, our Community Development Director to run point for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we've identified four topics for you this evening. You may not get through all four, but we'll start at the top. So the first one is to kind of discuss what's going on with the urban growth boundary expansion process. And I can backfill in on some of the technical stuff. But it's been a long history. The Chair of the Planning Commission, Phil Smith, was involved for a long time. And we went through this earlier, which got us to the point where we're at today. The second one is that the Planning Commission has spent probably the better part of about six, seven months, eight months now, talking about residential parking standards. And that's related to on-street parking. And it was all queued up with a subdivision development that was on a cul-de-sac and then accessed off of Collector Street. And so where do guests park, given our off-street and cul-de-sacs and the limited parking nature? So the Planning Commission can share what they've been talking about on that. Riverfront Master Plan is something that we've given briefings to the Planning Commission, to the council at different points in time as well. But we can talk about that project in more detail. There'll be some updates for everybody that I can provide because things have happened in the last few weeks. And then the last one was some questions that came up from the Planning Commission about hearings officers. So, city attorney and I had presented some material to the City Council on different options with that. So, Mr. Chair, will you talk about urban growth boundary expansion in the Newburgh 2030 project?
I don't know if I have anything to say that would be helpful. I've been in part of the Planning Commission for a long time and took part in the earlier effort to include land on the southeast side of the city within the urban growth boundary for industrial purposes. I might as well confess that I've been personally pushing that particular solution for at least 12 years. It only took me a couple of years on the Planning Commission to realize that, at least in my mind, the only logical place for industrial development is on the southeast side of the city. However, we ran into stiff opposition from friends of Yamhill County. And that resulted in a mediation effort between the city and the friends. In my opinion, that mediation was a failure. And so that leads us to trying to find a way to get the needed industrial land. Some years ago, for the City Council's information, we invented a new kind of zoning called M4 for large lot industrial zoning in an effort to plan long-term for the development of the city. The Newburgh has, of course, zero M4 land. And our goal was to create some by urban growth boundary expansion. But as I say, that mediation effort failed. And we continue to this day to have zero M4 land. And in my opinion, which is not the opinion of the Planning Commission, it's my personal opinion, this is a serious lack in the ongoing planning for the city. So, I'm very eager...In the process, since then, the city, the state has proposed new rules for a new UGB expansion process that's supposed to be simpler and easier. And city staff discovered that it perhaps wasn't. So Doug, you're going to have to report on that part.
So maybe as a little bit of a recap. So as the Chair indicated, we've gone through an urban growth boundary expansion process looking at the southeast area. And it was specifically for industrial land. So it was kind of set aside the commercial piece and the residential component of that. And so in the end, council directed us to withdraw our proposal to DLCD, LCDC, and we did so. We also then withdrew our urban reserve application that was being remanded and needed a bunch of work. And all the data and so forth was outdated. So as the Chair indicated, the state created a new administrative rule called Division 38, which is the simplified UGB method. So we had received a grant, a technical assistance grant from DLCD for $30,000. And we embarked on going down that path. We concluded last May of 2017. Before that, it was 18 months' worth of work. So we did community outreach and survey work. We looked at comp plan language that might need to be modified. We did preliminary buildable lands inventory. We established a study area that's a mile to a mile and a half around the city. We did evaluation on that. And as I've shared with both the Planning Commission and the City Council, is that we found that there were some technical problems with the administrative rule. We had cataloged all that information, shared it with DLCD staff on several occasions. At the direction of City Council, a briefing I gave you on that, you directed me to go work with LCDC and DLCD to see if we could get technical fixes done to the administrative rule. And I reported last fall that LCDC agreed to do that. And we put that into our policy agenda for this biennium. Then that leads to when in the biennium. And they identified to start in January of 2018 and have that work completed by the end of June of 2018. We met with staff there. They were in the process in March of identifying stakeholders and reconstituting the Rules Advisory Committee, which is called the RAC. We were hoping that they would not have to go down that path, that staff could deal with it. But they chose to go down with the RAC process. So here we are, the first part of April. There has not, to my knowledge, been a meeting scheduled yet to discuss the technical fixes, which range from issues about land supply, what's vacant and what's not vacant, or what's partially vacant. You may remember, in the discussions we had, I showed you the new Division 38 methodology that said, "This is how many acres of vacant and partially vacant and developed land we have." And then we went back to the Division 24 methodology. And I had the consultant say, "Let me some numbers that show me what would be considered vacant or partially vacant and redevelopable in this category." And you remember, there was almost a 400-acre difference between the two. So Division 24 said, "We had less vacant, partially vacant." And Division 38 says, "We have more." That led to things such as condominium projects, the common areas being considered partially vacant. We had fully developed parcels of commercial that were identified as partially vacant based upon the rule. We had situations where we had schools that were identified as partially vacant until they were completely developed and were not going to be developed for any residential housing. They had two schools on the property. So those are just some examples of what we went through. So then part of that is we went back, and this is kind of what's information, it's news. We went out and met with Yamhill County Assessor on how they categorize property per administrative rule and Department of Revenue requirements. And found that Division 38 methodology, looking at this land to improvement value, is completely different than what the 36 county assessors have to look at. So we prepared another memo that we sent off to DLCD, basically recapping what we believe should be occurring on, in the methodology, to determine what's vacant and partially vacant land. We are waiting for a response. We've asked if that be considered. We also encouraged the state to go to the county assessors who have quarterly meetings and talk about this issue so that they can get a good understanding from them. So while that was all taking place, we applied for another technical assistance grant to go what we call Phase 2 of Newburgh 2030. And that is to redo the buildable lands inventory after the technical fixes are done, to reevaluate the 10,000-plus acres of land around Newburgh that are within the study area, to then start to evaluate the serviceability of land within the study area. Then circle back around, you've got to go through this serviceability kind of twice in this process. And things are a little out of sequence how you would normally do it because we have to have the technical fixes done to have the buildable land, determine what the land need is. But meantime, move forward. So we got a $50,000 grant from the state. We matched that with an equal dollar amount. So the RFP is out on the streets right now for consultant services. That will be coming back to us in, if the 13th is when it closes. And then we'll evaluate. And we have to notify the state by the 20th of April who the consultant is going to be for that. Now, what's interesting in...
Clarification if I may. The consultant is going to be working with us or with LCDC?
Us. Consultant will be working for us. So the Chair had kind of indicated this need for industrial land. And I think it's kind of important because one of the other activities I have is to talk with businesses about land needs. And we are at that point right now. We're on the industrial side, depending upon the methodology you look at. We have somewhere between 50 to 80 acres of vacant industrial land. Two entities own disproportionately that number of vacant land. That is Austin Industries and the City of Newburgh. What's left is a bunch of one-acre, two-acre parcels that are on the books as vacant or partially vacant, but not necessarily available. Property owners aren't willing to sell. They're not willing to develop. So we have companies that are in Newburgh today that I'm talking with, who are, can't find a building space, can't find land, want to expand, can't find that in Newburgh. So their next step is to start to look outside of Newburgh. And so that leads to potentially a loss of business, loss of employment, loss of that diversity. As we've talked about, you know, having jobs located here in Newburgh for residents in Newburgh. We know that we have a very transitory population moving in and out of the community every day for work. So that's a little bit of kind of background on what's happened basically since the end of December, I think, the last time we really talked about this.
I'd invite city councillors, if they have questions for staff, and of course commissioners too, if they have questions for staff about this. I have one. How does the mill property function into this? Because that's a chunk of acres that, I don't know what the number is, but it's a big piece of land. And it's industrial land. And I can imagine, in various forms, some person saying, "Newburgh doesn't need any industrial land. Look, they've got lots."
That is possible to say. In the preliminary buildable land study that was done, the mill site was identified as partially vacant per the methodology. As we know, West Rock purchased the mill site in October of 2015, October 1st. October 15th of that year, they idled the mill. January of 2016, they closed the mill. They have been looking for a purchaser of that property for two years. They're still working to find a purchaser of that property. There have been the potential for business development within the community on acreage size that would fit on portions of the mill site. But until that mill site is sold and acquired by someone who looks at doing redevelopment, it's essentially, it's not on the table for discussion with an outside entity. So that complicates the matter. So it skews the numbers. And so even though you may call it partially vacant, it's not available.
Welcome, Councillor Johnson.
In my understanding, and I have a loose understanding of this, is that some of that's outside the urban growth boundary, correct?
The mill site is 220 acres, 115, approximately 220 acres. Approximately 115 acres is within the urban growth boundary.
And follow on. Do we have a sense as if we were, if we did have a buyer and they wanted to bring it all into the city, would we have a fight on our hands with thousand friends? Do we know that? Or has there been any indication?
I wouldn't say that there's been an indication. The property that West Rock currently holds that's outside of the urban growth boundary is east and west of Dog Ridge. So south of Wainouski to the east of Dog Ridge is the disproportionate amount of that. And in that, you've got Hess Creek that runs through it. You've got some steep slope areas. And so even the entire 75 acres roughly is not really developable. There's potentially portions of it up near Wainouski that might be developable. There's a couple of parcels down off of Dog Ridge that might be developable. But you've got residential, you know, comes kind of right up to the South Pond. And so some may look at and say, "Well, if you don't want industry down Dog Ridge Road, you know, you might want to have some residential there. Maybe keep the industrial on the north and east side of Hess Creek up towards Wainouski approach." But nobody specifically come out and said no, but nobody specifically come out and said yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Follow on if I may. Dog Ridge is county, under county jurisdiction, is it not?
It is.
So any development in there would be under their purview, right?
The way it is right now, yes. For land that's outside the UGB, it's under county purview.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councillor McGinnis?
Portion of land inside the city limits, huge portion of land outside the city limits. How much of that land would have to be annexed into the city to make a developable? To really put together a well-developed plan?
Well, probably right around 100 acres. There's approximately 100 acres of the West Rock site that's outside of the city limits, but within the urban growth boundary.
Follow on.
Are we aware of any county objections to the City of Newburgh annexing that 100 acres?
No objections that I'm aware of, based on conversations we've had with the county.
Follow on. Follow on.
In your conversations with prospective owners, is that 100 acres included in our proposals to them to buy and develop that? Or is it just the city portion that we propose to buyers?
It's...The information that we have shared with West Rock and their representatives is that of the 115 acres that's within the urban growth boundary, like I said, about 100 acres of that is outside the city limits. It would need to be annexed in order to get city services, sewer and water. They're aware of that. Again, it's finding the right purchaser, developer who would want to come in. And, you know, astute developers know that, yeah, you know, we need sewer and water service in order to develop. I think the other piece of this is not always necessarily to get focused on just the employment, the industrial employment side of it. There's the residential side of the equation as well. I've shared this with the city manager, you know, in conversations with developers that are in the community today on the residential side. In the next three to five years, if things materialize, the economy stays positive, interest rates stay low, so forth and so on, is that we could see 1,000 units, residential units in Newburgh in the next three to five years of both detached, single-family and multifamily development. Now, we don't have much multifamily development left. Chehalis Point started construction. We just got an application in for a new apartment north of Rite Aid. We did an approval for an apartment project down on Second Street at Edwards. But our higher-density multifamily land is something the Planning Commission is fully aware of. We don't have much. I mean, our last big parcel is at the corner of Fernwood and Springbrook. And it needs to be annexed in order to be developed. So as we try to address the issue about housing affordability, we've got this issue about where do we get this higher-density multifamily land? And if these trends continue forward with residential development, is where do we have a land supply for the future, 14-year or 20-year horizon, depending on what methodology, in order to accommodate additional single-family and multifamily development?
Follow on.
With the exhaustion of those parcels, does that make our case with both 1,000 friends of Oregon and 1,000 friends again, Hill County, maybe a little bit easier because in the past, they've, their objections have been, "Man, you've got plenty of available land to do this and that and everything else." But with the exhaustion of those parcels, is that a segue that they would be interested in when they begin to talk about developable land, the availability, the absence of available land to grow?
Counselor, I think it gets to, because of the way the methodologies is...Looking prospective is now we have to use the Portland State University population projections. So, you know, we're looking at about a 1.8% annual average growth rate. 1.8% out until 2035. And then the number actually goes down a little bit. So you have to look at population projections going forward. And everybody does. But for the methodologies on what you need for land, you have to inventory what's been used on the ground right now. Then look at your population numbers. So just me saying, "Oh, over the next three to five years, we could see 1,000 residential units developed." That's speculation. And nobody would buy into that. They say, "Well, you know, the economy can change. Developers can change their mind." And they can. So there's nothing absolute about it until, you know, they pull that building permit and start construction.
Follow on.
With Portland State and the percentage that you mentioned one point, whatever it is...
Eight.
Does the Portland State study become...Does it make our process more difficult? That seems to be pretty conservative on their part in terms of future growth.
You know, we saw trends in the past when we were in the 2.4%, 2.5% annual growth. But looking forward, and the laws changed. Portland State is now the one that does population projections for the entire state of Oregon, all of its counties and all of its cities. And they went through this methodology. And back in June of 2017, they came out with the new numbers. And they gave us, it's a 50-year projection. And of course, once you get past 20 years, you know, it gets a little squishy. So we basically got from 2017 to 2035, what do those numbers look like? Their projections were, that had been adopted, is that it's about 1.8%.
Go ahead. I have, let me ask you a question. We were talking about Riverfront. And this has an impact on members of the Planning Commission and the City Council. As we look at the evolution of that area, is that going to necessitate a reactivation of the NewAM, Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission, which is a joint commission with the county?
Mayor, no. The NewAM would meet again when there's issues about urban growth boundary expansion. So if you took the south part of Newburgh for land that's already within the UGB urban growth boundary, that property can be annexed by a property owner when they want to come to the city.
But if you stepped outside of that...
But if you go outside of that urban growth boundary, then you have to go through NewAM.
And that could happen.
It could. That will be part of this... That will be part of the Newburgh 2030 process.
A detailed question. The state has said that we all have to use Portland State numbers so that we don't have these constant fights between different groups. How often does Portland State update their numbers?
Every three to four years.
Mr. Mayor, we've spent a large amount of our time, half an hour already, on the urban growth boundary expansion process, which is an item that I'm very concerned about. But maybe it would be a good idea to talk about some of these other things. Doug, do you have a report on the parking standards question? So that you can tell the councillors what we've been talking about?
Well, we... The planning commission held a hearing on residential development that had a cul-de-sac, and it was for fourteen lots. And the questions started coming up from the planning commission about, "Well, where do the guests park?" So, our standards require that you have to have two off-street parking spaces. And we count garages as applying to those two off-street spaces. But the planning commission discussions were, "But people fill their garages up with stuff." And so, if you've got a side-by-side two-car garage, which means that you've got a double-wide driveway as well, you essentially, you've got four parking spaces. If you fill up your garage with stuff, you're down to two. And so, part of the discussions on the planning commission side was, "Well, it may not necessarily be an issue in the R1 for having adequate parking. It may be more of an issue in R2, and even more so an issue where you have cul-de-sacs." So, then you take a different type of development model, let's say in R2, and you look at it and they say, "Well, as land becomes more expensive, building material costs continue to increase, trying to address issues on housing affordability," is you get two-story homes with a single-car garage with one space out front. Still meeting the requirement, you've got two. But now, the planning commission talked about, "What if you fill that one garage space up with stuff?" And now, you've got one, but the family's got two cars. And where do you park? So, my staff was doing research. We looked at other communities and what their standards are for parking, and honestly, you know, it's across the board. You know, there's not a set model that you can go to and says, "This is the one that works in all situations." They have not been looking at the issue in R3 with multifamily because there's already off-street parking requirements that are prescribed based upon the number of bedrooms in each unit, and then there's guest parking requirements that you already have. So, it's kind of focusing on this R2 piece. They had a meeting in February. Fortunately, I was not there. Unfortunately, I was not there. Or fortunately, I'm not sure. Fortunately, I was someplace really nice. Is that they've talked about staff maybe coming up with a tour that they can go out and look, because this is all legislative, and go out and look at these kind of different developments that have been happening over the last few years, and how parking relates to that. You know, we've got this other situation when you're in, you know, the area kind of south of downtown, from Hess Creek to Shehalen Creek and going south, and then the older neighborhood just north of downtown. We've also got a lot of narrower streets. They don't meet our current transportation cross-section for those roadways. So, sometimes you don't always get parking on both sides of the street. You can only get parking on one side of the street. And as we get infill development that's going in, you know, what kind of pressures does that put on parking within neighborhoods as a whole? What kind of character, what impact might that have on the character of those particular neighborhoods? Mr. Chair, anything else you want to fill in from the February discussion?
Well, not in detail. I guess I would report to the city council, and you can see if you agree with this. We haven't come up with a solution. And we're concerned that the solution have enough parking requirements so that we don't cause bad neighbor relations between people. On the other hand, we don't want to have such a high standard that we drive up the price of housing, especially affordable housing, on smaller lots. And it's, of course, it's the smaller lots that have less street frontage where you would have more trouble with parking. So, I haven't seen a solution yet. If you guys can come up with one, I say, "Guys," it's the only male councilors today. We'd love to have real great input to solve that conundrum. I don't know. We could have a law that you cannot put stuff in your garage. And, yeah, let the city try to enforce that one. I don't know. Steve, go ahead.
I live in a community that stipulates that. In Spalding Oaks, which would not meet the parking requirements that, you know, being built in the '70 and what the parking requirements would be now. But if you own a... If you have a garage, your vehicle must be parked in the garage at night. No exceptions. You cannot use it for storage. You've got homes that I know of that are used not only for storage, that's the bedroom that the fourth and fifth child is living in, you know, that type of thing. So, the stipulation, a citywide stipulation, if you own, if you have a garage, your cars need to be in there. I don't know whether the city attorney, you know, would agree with that, you know, or not, but that would be a major solution to the dilemma that you guys face. If you have a two-car garage, and it's a two-car family, your cars are in the garage at night, I view this from a little bit different angle. You talk about the livability of a community. That's one thing, all right? From a public safety point of view, one of the first things that when Les Holloman was here about a year or whatever, and I had Les drive me around the city and point out all of the public safety issues of cars to where he could not get a fire truck or an ambulance or... I didn't do it with Police Casey. But there are numerous streets in the city of Newburgh, they would be laying hundreds and hundreds of feet of hose because they can't get a vehicle to a fire, all right? Let alone sometimes, you know, you don't think about an ambulance being very big, but if they're parked on both sides of the... And it's a dog-leng lot as well, you're transporting a patient on a cart. We looked at one particular location. It was not five yards, ten yards, twenty yards. It was more like, you know, forty to fifty yards with a person on a gurney, you know, to try and get him there. So, it becomes a publicity issue as well. And I know that Jason, you've dealt with this issue here or whatever. But one of the first things that Newburgers could be encouraged, if you own a garage, your car's in there at night. There are communities already within the city where that already works. You own a car, you have a garage, it's parked in the garage. It doesn't expand that way. It's either by covenant and restriction or it's by HOAs, or where it's been there. And so, we wouldn't be the only community in Oregon that made that kind of situation, stipulation. But there are communities around Oregon that have made that stipulation. If you own a garage, your car's in the garage at night.
Thank you. I'm going to take this idea back to the planning commission.
The last point that Les made to me or whatever, if it's a bad fire, those fire trucks have big bumpers on them because they can mow or row to be able to get to a fire truck, you know, to a fire or whatever. They'll deal with the repercussions of that, you know, later on. But they could row the hoe. Hoe the row. Hoe the row, I guess would be a good point.
Yeah, so, we were looking at this mostly from a planning and future development perspective. I think you're kind of coming at it from a current enforcement perspective, so it's kind of a little different angle than we're looking at it from. But just to expand on some of the things Phil was saying, a couple of the ideas we had was, so, we'd come back to the example of the cul-de-sac. If we were to, I hesitate to say sacrifice, donate one of the lots around, say, it's hard to imagine, but just like a circular lot, and you have all these houses and you have an outlet. But if you were to say, "Okay, we don't have any parking around this circle," so we donate one of these lots to be communal parking just for this particular development, is one of the ideas we had, and that may work for other things as well. But again, you're starting to, where's the balance between that and property values? Now, maybe he's not... He can take that up with other parts of the lot or the overall development that's maybe a stream quarter or doesn't work, or he can kind of, you know, break it somehow with doing that. But it really is a tricky situation. I think the best option for that kind of thing is offering developers flexibility and say, "Okay, instead of it must be this way, it must be this way, here's an option. You could do it this way. Does this work? Here's another option." And give them several options to be able to meet the demands, because every little piece of property is different, and try and make an optimal situation for both the people buying the houses and the people developing the houses, trying to make some money.
How much interface has the planning commission had with the traffic safety on the... As you balance and go with narrow streets or wider streets or this or that, how much interface have you had with the traffic safety and/or traffic engineering in itself?
Jason, you might want to answer. Not much with traffic safety. We occasionally have contact with them. Much more often, we have contact with city engineers or, of course, developers with... And developers often pay for traffic studies relevant to their development. I guess that's all I would say for now.
I would pretty much agree. It's... We had mostly ancillary contacts about traffic rules. It's more like, these are the rules we had to comply with and kind of see the impact. We don't see a lot of the philosophy that goes into making them, which would be more traffic safety, if I had to speak on that.
Doug, do you have comments on that issue?
Okay. Well, the... I don't believe that the discussion on the residential parking has progressed far enough yet to have a conversation with the city engineer and the traffic safety commission. We're still back bouncing off ideas. We've got a big bucket, and there's lots of pieces in there, and trying to dig through and figure out what may or may not work. I think as we start to refine that in the coming months, there will be that opportunity to go to Khan and the Traffic Safety Commission and have a conversation.
I agree with what Jason was saying. I really think it's important that we utilize the developers, especially that are here in Newburgh, that we partner with them and have them come in, work with the planning commission. There was one developer that came in here, you know, excuse me, addressing, you know, about the development they were doing, and they had gone through and looked at our master plan, they had looked at our development code, they had analyzed everything and said, "In order for us to be able to develop, you know, some affordable housing, these are the things we have to do. That's what we have to do." It's unrealistic to put a parking restriction on a citizen because the first thing that you're going to do is they're going to move out of town. So, you can do that in a private community, you can do that in a gated community or an HOA, or you can put a CCNR for that development, a rule about parking spaces, but citywide, I mean, that's just, it's just never going to happen. But I do like the idea of maybe getting some developers who have interest in the community and they care about the community. And you propose, you say, "Look, I know you want to squeeze forty homes, but maybe you go thirty-five homes and you add some extra spots for parking." And I don't know if you create like a subcommittee or something like that, but maybe that's helpful, but I think that's really the only way you could really get it done.
Follow on, too? I was just going to say ninety percent probably, just off the top of my head, developers come through in our process are completely amenable to reducing lot size based on input from neighbors, input from us. You know, they're usually pretty willing to work with people along those lines, so...
I assure you that... I realize the folly of trying to take some rule and try to change the way people have been parking their cars after they've been parking them for, you know, X number of years. No, I would be thinking of, this might be another tool that we could put in the options list for a developer on some new thing that might be able to give a developer a different way of getting to his or her goal and overcoming the parking need by perhaps creating a homeowner association to enforce the rules of the CCNRs so that in this new development, this intriguing idea that every garage has to have a vehicle in it at night, it would... It's a tool, it would not, I would not regard it as a, you know, one-size-fits-all magic bullet, but it might be something that we could add to the list of a developer's options in proposing a way to get a development in. So, we want to add to the bucket that Doug was describing. We really are not come to a solution yet. We're just, we're struggling with this question of, as I described, we want sufficient parking, but we want affordable housing, which tends to be smaller footprint, and there's the clash. Should we move on to the idea of the hearings officer? I don't know anything about that.
Doug, do we do enough on the Riverfront master plan, or do you have something more in there, Doug, that you wanted to reach out with?
Doug Rex, again, just probably a few pieces of update. So, we've concluded our negotiations on our intergovernmental agreement and scope of work with ODOT for the Riverfront area. So, just a quick reminder, it's four hundred acres, study area, Ninth Street on the north, Willamette River on the south, basically Wynuski on the east and Shehalen Creek on the west. Major property owners in the area, West Rock, Baker Rock, Yam Hill County, the old landfill. Then you've got the existing development north of the bypass, but there's infill of multifamily, single-family, R1, R2, R3, and so forth that can occur. We just held our kickoff meeting with the consultant. So, Angelo Planning Group is the consultant for the project. Held that conference call meeting on April thirteenth. The entire consulting team and our ODOT representative will be here in town. We're basically taking the day, working with the consultant and the staff. We're going to do a tour of the entire study area. Was able to get access for the consultants onto the West Rock site so they can do a walking tour outside of any buildings, but walk the site so they can get an understanding of that. We'll be able to see the landfill, the Baker Rock property, and we'll show them infill opportunities and so forth. Cheryl Keynes is managing that project. We've already started to give the consultant a whole plethora of documents. So, many of those twenty-three master plans, many of them are going to the consultant. So, we've started that process as well. You may remember that the council, the mayor, in concurrence with the council, established a citizens advisory committee for that process. There's one seat that's held open, and that is for whoever ends up buying the West Rock mill site. With or without that seat being filled, we will move forward. This will take about eighteen months to go through the process. Planning commission will get briefings, council will get briefings. We've got a public involvement process that we'll be putting together. We'll be utilizing Rosa and her connections and in-reach. Because the census tract in which this study area occurs is one that has some of our highest poverty rates and our most culturally diverse location in the community as well. So, we've got to find ways to get in the inroads, to get into people's homes, to get them excited and to get their input in the process. So, that's what I have on that.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor McGinnity? I recall, we own nothing along the river at the moment.
We do not have any property we own that has actual river... Well, I take that. Our water treatment plant has river frontage, but it's down a very steep slope. The other two properties from the old wastewater treatment plant and so forth are part of that. that, city leased to the county for the parking lot for Rogers Landing, but those two parcels do not have riverfront.
Rogers Landing is county?
The county leases the land from West Rock.
Okay.
And Baker Rock.
And?
City of Newburgh.
All three. Thank you. Follow-on to that question is that, once the plan is developed, how many miles will we own that will be within the city limits? Will it be measured by miles or yards?
Undetermined at this point in time. We, that's going to come out of the process. What we've heard early from the community is the idea of recapturing the riverfront that they have not had access to, other than Rogers Landing. We've heard about having trails either down along the river or up on the bluff. We've heard about the bypass trail, can we connect Ewing Young to the bypass trail? Can the old landfill be converted into a park area and connect that? Can you connect over to Hess Creek, for the trail that's planned by CPRD to go up Hess Creek? We have Leavitt Park in the area, so we've got Ewing Young, Leavitt Park, or Rogers Landing are the existing open space areas, but what additional open space areas might come out of this planning process for the population? We've heard about, could there be some mixed use down along the river? We've heard about industrial down along the river. We've, out of the downtown plan, and the tourism strategy is retaining the rail line in Blaine Street, and then the private portion that West Rock now owns, and running a trolley into the downtown, and eventually maybe out to the Allison Inn. We've talked about, we've heard people about infill development, both multifamily and single-family and parcels within the study area. So there's a wide mix of things, and so here's an opportunity for the community in the next 18 months to say, this is what we would like to see our riverfront become.
In our last few minutes, I'd like to learn about the hearings officer. What is that, and how will it be used?
So the city attorney and I did a presentation to the city council on the concept of the hearings officer. We also shared that information with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission routinely gets to listen and holds quasi-judicial public hearings. It's in their wheelhouse, they do it once a month, or every other month, as well as dealing with legislative actions. City council, you may touch quasi-judicial a couple of times a year. And when you don't do it every month, or twice a month, it can be challenging about ex parte contacts and bias, issues coming up, just following the procedures and the protocols can sometimes, because you're not used to it, through that. And so we talked with the city council about a concept or an idea of, well, what about a hearings officer to deal with quasi-judicial? So we shared ideas that could range from, city council doesn't hold quasi-judicial hearings, so you may have it. It goes to Planning Commission, from there, if it's appealed, it goes to a hearings officer. If that's appealed, it goes directly to Luba. It could be, hold, Planning Commission holds a public hearing, goes to a hearings officer, but goes through a path of some kind of validation by city council, and then if it gets appealed, it goes to Luba. There's another model of, do you want Planning Commission to continue to hold quasi-judicial hearings? Could you have a hearings officer do that? And then, if something appealed from the hearings officer, it goes to the Planning Commission, and then to the city council, or maybe the Planning Commission is the final decision-maker, and then it goes to Luba. So there's different mixes and axes that you can do. City council came back with a series of questions, I don't have them with me tonight, and so the city attorney and I said, yes, we go back and do some additional investigations and so forth, and come back. Given our current workload, city attorney and I talked, it'd probably be in fall of 2018, that we'll come back, get the answers to the questions that were asked by the city council, and get some further, either more questions from you, or get some type of direction from you. As we go through that process, we'll keep the Planning Commission in the loop, because there may be a particular loop that involves them or doesn't involve them. That's kind of where we're at with that piece.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for Doug on the?
I have questions, I'm more of a statement, and that is, I personally would not be in favor of any hearings officer proposal that doesn't include some aspect of the Planning Commission being involved in those decisions. I understand what the, trying to get the city council out of an area that is very technical, that a lot of us struggle with, but I also think that we need to balance citizen input into what our community looks like versus convenience for a policy-setting body, you know? Almost like the parking and the affordable housing, you know, finding that sweet spot. And so I guess the other comment I would make is, I would also hope that through this process and talking about this, that the Planning Commission is more involved, instead of less involved, with where we go, to make sure that our citizen volunteers are also consulted and asked, you know, you guys are doing the heavy lifting when it comes to this stuff, and I want to make sure that we, you know, and Doug's great at that, so I, you know, I just kind of wanted to publicly say that I would hope that the Planning Commission would be more involved and less involved with whatever, you know, idea we come up with when it comes to hearings officers.
You're going to get more opportunity later in the fall, but especially after the little groups. Go ahead.
My own, I'm sure you guys already asked this question, but we have to ask, you know, are we getting bang for our buck? And how much does it cost us to have a hearings officer? And is it worth it in terms of improved city functioning? So, I mean, that'll be a policy decision that eventually the city council will have to make, but that's certainly on my mind as we think about these things in future months. Mr. Mayor, our hour is almost up, and I think we've spent our time, at least somewhat productively. There's only three of us here. Do any of you want to say something to further the conversation? We are content.
I'd just like to say that I'd like to be, sorry, just real quick, I just want to be included in any of the Riverfront stuff, just because I think that's very interesting, and I'd like to be involved.
Very good. Very good, welcome. I think on behalf of the council, we appreciate you, you guys joining us and sharing your perceptions, your concerns, and so we're working together as a united team, hopefully towards one ultimate goal of what's better for Newburgh, what's over there. Thank you all. John, thank you. Jason? Well, we appreciate you guys being here. With that, is there anything further to do before the council and work section? None appearing, we will be in recess for 15 minutes.
You can always.
So you're too busy to get into the real one for the fall? Well.
Jason, I'm going to get out of here.
Oh, you guys are dollars on there a couple weeks ago.
I think I read.
Truman, I'm going to put you on the other side of Doug here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to put you on the other side of Doug here.
Okay.
Truman, I'm going to put you on the other side of Doug here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, I will.
I haven't moved that.
Yeah.
Probably just trying to wait until the fall.
True.
And then the explant.
True.
So, there you go.
That's, that's good.
That's why I made some thinking about it.
Yeah, I bet so.
So, these, yeah.
Stand-up thing after church.
Simple.
I've been thinking, I've been at North Valleys for 15 years.
Maybe you said it, like, you, I mean, and deciding what happens during the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I do, and I look like.
Well, I don't like.
Yeah.
I appreciate them.
I appreciate them.
And I do, and I look like.
I'm here, the town mayor.
I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, we're not.
I've heard, I've heard a couple of years.
See?
Well, I turn my head over.
Yeah.
No, I don't, yeah.
I'm funny, yeah.
I volunteer myself.
And I would say, well, I see.
And I know, it's, yeah.
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 I will, I will. I haven't moved that.
So.
Yeah. Probably just trying to wait for it to fall.
True.
And then he explained it.
True.
So, there you go. That's it. And now going.
Good.
That's why I made something.
You're giving him his worst.
Yeah, I bet so. I'll fall fast.
So at least.
We've been thinking, I've been at North Valleys for fifteen years. Maybe you said it, like, you and me, and deciding what happens with dreams.
Yeah.
Or I need this.
You know.
And I do, and I look like one.
Down the one.
Yeah.
So. So. Why? I don't see those. Oh, yeah. It's hard to play. It's hard to play. It's hard to play. It's hard to play. So.
There's no one's way. Yeah. It's kind of. He has probably. He has. He has. He has.
That's where we go. We have. I don't know. But it's. He has. He has. Fantastic. Well, they know. And they are. They're. They're. They're not. So. He's. He's. Been talking. He's. He's. I don't. So. I know. I know. He has. He has. He has. He does have to. But I'm not sure. I should not change. But I have said. How you feel. You would say.
Suppose I get.
Wait. Wait. I think it's. Sit back in these. Big. All right. Good. And then. First. Clear down. We didn't have. She was. I wanted to show them. When you first. Basically. The. Long. So. So.
I'm here. The. I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not.
Yeah. Actually. Wait. I heard. Group. Somebody. Yeah. See? Well, by turn. I get older. They. Totally.
Yeah. No. So. Maybe. So. What? You can. Just get older. It's. Too much. Yeah. Yeah. Now. Now. I thought. Right. I don't. Have. So. You know. I mean. I think. There were. There were. My. You know. I have. I have. Graduated. I'm. Not. I know. I know. My. God. Well. I'm. I have. Really. I'm. Yes. Question to me. I. I. Oh. Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. Yeah. I have. I have. I have. I have. I have. I have. I bring it. I. I. No. I don't. I'm funny. Yeah. Yeah. Volunteer myself. And I would say. I see. It's. 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 Yeah. It's. 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 If I got it. It's. 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 It keeps. The. It's. Okay. There's. There's. Yeah. I do. I do. I do. And I know. It's. Yeah. Yeah. It's. 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 You know. Yeah. You would have. Also. You. Yeah. I. I. Has. It's. Has he been? To. Something? You know. It could be. They don't know. It's. Who is there? I'm. It's. It's. Uh. It's. 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 God. And. I see. You. Yeah. It's. 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 How. Again. It's. 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 For. So. I. 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 Do. Except. We. To. One. Well. We. Probably. Now. We have those. Adjustments. I'm. Just. Just. I'm. Just. I'm. Just. I'm. I have. You. See. The. Next. You. Are. You. Every. Reason. God. I. 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 Pretty skinny. Things. First. I. Yes. I. 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 Exactly. That. I. I. Yeah. I'd say. Yeah. Very. Happy. Yeah. I really. Love. I. So. Yeah. Guys. Okay. Well. What I see. It's. Take. One. Five. Didn't. You. This. I. We. We. I. 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 It's. It's. Good. Such. A. Well. It's. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Let's. Get. Five minutes. Then. I. I want to show you. I want to. Check. Yours. And. So. To. Make sure. That I. 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 Here. Um. You. I. Said. Do. I. Sure. We. So. We. Thank you. Thank you. And. I. Sure. Yeah. I understand. It's what makes you. Like. After. Eighteen. Nineteen. Now. You. I. I. We. We. I. You know. Uh. We'll. I. Yes. Okay. I. Sorry. Okay. Three. One. That's. That's. I. Thank you. It's. Good. That's. What. Makes. Yep. Good. I'm. Sure. Yeah. I. Okay. I'm. But. Yeah. Yeah. She asked me if I'm on. That's all. I. Actually. Um. Good. Okay. It's. A lot. We. Are. I just. Well. I saw. It. Yeah. It's. Okay. It's. On. You. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So. We're. Sure. Hey. Yeah. It's. It's. They. 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 Yeah. A lot. Of. Some. We're. Talking.
Dave, before we get out of here, talk about audio. So. What do we do about audio when we go with the cameras? So.
Yeah. So. There. Be. A. Place. You. Show. What. You. Back. Into. The. House. There. I. I. Show. I. 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 Well. They're. I. 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 And. There's. Three. I. I. And. I. And. We. Have. I. 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 Yeah. They're. And. I. Yeah. 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 I. I. But. It's. I. And. It was. About. I. 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 There was. This. Like. And. And. It's. 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 I. I. Actually. About. I. I. It's. I. 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 Even. I. 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 Sorry. Watching. Me. Watching. There. I'm. Trouble. Yes. Yes. You. People. Yeah. Bro. Yeah. 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 I. I. Tension. It was. It just felt like. Like. So. I think. Was that. How. It. And. And. It. 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 Somewhere. So. Then. Yes. I. It was. I. So. But. But. Yeah. I. 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 And. And. There was. I. 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 Henry. I. I. Yeah. So. That stopped. Was. The. C. And. We didn't have. A. First. We. Just. I. You. In. In. The. That was. Right. Now. And. We. And. And. First. And. Yeah. I. I. And. You. Got. Behind. It's. It's. There's. There's. One. You. Please. I. 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 This. Is. Why. Is. It. I. 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 It's. It's. Hey. It's. That's. What. I. So. That's. What. I. You. Know. I. I. You're. They. I. I. And. I. So. So. Those. Experts. Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. We're now going to convene the Newburgh City Council Business Section for April two, two thousand and eighteen. I welcome you all, and may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present with the exception of Council President Denise Bacon, who is excused.
Thank you. Would you please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
One of the first items of business this evening is your concurrence, council, to approve a proclamation recognizing April eighth through fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, as National Library Week in Newburgh. Pleasure, the council. It's been moved? Seconded? Is there any further discussion? None appearing? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? It is approved. The Newburgh Public Library has served the community since nineteen oh eight and continues to meet and address the current needs of all of our residents. The library joins with other libraries and communities nationwide in an annual celebration of Library Week to recognize the contributions of libraries and library staff that it makes for our communities. This year's celebration will include the opening of the Library of Things, the Library of Things Collection, which includes games, craft tools, and a variety of other tools to expand learning. We would like to share with you, and it has been adopted by the council, a proclamation recognizing April eighth through fourteen as National Library Week, whereas libraries are not just about what have, what they have for people, but what they do for and with people. Libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions, and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, whereas librarians are leaders in their institutions and organizations, in their communities, in the nation, and in the world as a whole, whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access technologies, whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs, whereas libraries are pioneers supporting democracy and affecting social change with a commitment to providing equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, or socioeconomic status, whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity, whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers and supporters across America are support, celebrating National Library Week. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by myself and the city council and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that April eighth through fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, is the National Library Week, and we encourage the citizens of Newburgh to visit and explore the live, the Newburgh Public Library and find out what's new at
Members of the Library Foundation and Library Board.
I would like to present this to you and them. And thank you very much for the services of the library, services of our board and English. Good to see you here. How are you doing? Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Congratulations.
The members of our Library Foundation and two members of the Library Board. Both of those groups have a big difference from the library to the city. I do encourage you to come visit us next week especially because we've got a number of events. We're taking the information next to our Library of Things. And Jeff just volunteered to run a discrimination for the Library of Things, so that won't be a matter. This is a way to either try different things, just check out the news, see what it's like, see if it's something you like to do, the telescopes, the people that live in the office, other things you can do, learn. My third is to check out flyers and...
And the flyers for you?
Flyers are all around the location.
Good. Very good. And you did your presentation on your archery.
You're awesome.
Thank you again. Congratulations.
I would like to now move to a recognition, if I may, of our 9-1-1 telecommunicators. Mary? If you would join us up here at the table? We'll wait till you get the mic on so you can introduce them, please. Continue, Mary. Identify yourself and your guest.
Okay, I'm Mary Newell. I'm the Support Services Manager for the Police Department and oversee the 9-1-1 Center. I have with me Lori Steinbeck. She's our dispatch supervisor and has been with the City of Newburgh for 13 years. She does the day-to-day and is actually working tonight, so we have one dispatcher and a trainee in the dispatch center. You want to open? Next week is also telecommunicators week, so we'll be celebrating and decorating for the week, so please stop by. We'd love to show you what we're doing.
Thank you very much.
You might let the council know about your...
Oh, they haven't seen it. They're... This is a card holder. But it's silver with a 9-1-1 et cetera. Isn't that cool or what?
Retractable lanyard, huh?
Yes, a retractable lanyard. Sounds good. Thank you. Something useful as well.
Do you have any particular hours if you're inviting people to stop by or anything?
Well, we're celebrating all week. Like the library, it's the 8th through the 14th, so we have something, a little something planned for every day. And Lori has been instrumental putting it together. We're decorating and we have a sports theme. Now, it's not the beavers and the ducks.
What?
Yeah. But we are encouraging people to wear their favorite sports shirt for the week.
Well, it's not that we do not, because I think we do appreciate the work that the dispatch does, being the immediate contact between the community and our police and fire services. So, the role you play is so critical in the safety and the well-being of our citizens. And I thank you personally, and I think the council thanks you also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, any comments?
Thank you for hosting us here.
Isn't that awesome?
Yeah, I think that's great.
There's a lot of experience in the dispatch center. You know, we did have one that just retired recently, but we do have three or four very long-term employees that have been there a long time. And we've gone through a lot of change over that period of time, so.
Thank you.
All right.
We appreciate it very much. And be sure those get distributed now. City managers report, please.
So, Mayor and Counsel, Johan and your city manager, thank you for thanking both the library and the 9-1-1. Those lanyards was... Mary saw the need that we all carry our employee cards, and it's just something that's very useful. And that if you haven't recently taken the opportunity to come down one of the evenings to see dispatch and just watch them of what they do is that they are the consummate professionals and it's a team between the officer on the street and the dispatcher. So, I think that's something you would really enjoy and then really appreciate what goes on. We'll also, within the next 60 days, be having an employee recognition breakfast. And so, we'll get that on your calendar. Hopefully after Wednesday, we decide on the time. And it's a breakfast that runs from 8:00 to 9:30 at the Cultural Center. It's going to be on a Wednesday, so we'll give you a far enough out that you're also invited to that. And that's a general recognition appreciation of employees. There are about 150 employees with the city. So, the last two weeks, not quite as busy as some of our most recent months, so that's good news for us, but still busy enough. Continued meeting with the finance and just putting the budget together so that we're ready in a little over two weeks to begin the budget hearing. So, this is working with each of the departments, then putting the final paper together that we can present to you and to the Budget Committee and getting a lot of graphics. This will be a particular, an interesting year for budgets, and we've been preparing for that of dealing with some budget shortfalls, but also the communications being paid for and seeing how this fits into the long-range financial health of the city. Also conducted a director's evaluation, so that's just one of the jobs that comes down is to do an annual evaluation, as you do of me, that I do of each of the directors. And then we had the weekly meetings with Finance, Public Works, HR, City Recorder, Community Engagement, and the Admin Assistant. So, that's the week that we just kind of cover, goes on with the department. And then every other week, I meet with IT. Also during the last two weeks, we discussed an opportunity for a Fox internship program, and this is for an intern working in the Community Engagement with ROSA. So, went to the department. It's a department of cinematic, theater arts, and journalism all in one. And so, we're looking to have an intern right now that's going to help with doing some graphics and media work on the budget coming up, and then go into an even more formal internship program with Fox beginning in the summer. We also participated in a countywide tourism summit, and Counselor Murray was also there, and the members of the Lodging Tax Committee sent you some material about the dollar amounts that are spent on many different agencies, most of them trade agencies in the wine industry, both region-wide, Willamette Valley, and then even some within our community in the Downtown Wine Association to promoting tourism. And this is a prelude to the Lodging Tax Committee, a subcommittee on marketing, then the full committee are talking about a different model that they wish you to, or they're going to ask you to consider. So, sometime in the next probably 60 days, you will see something with that. Also worked with staff and also with the Animal Shelter Board, and this is on a proposal for the sale of the shelter. There is a public hearing that's scheduled for you two weeks from tonight, and at that time, the recommendation will come to staff of selling the animal shelter. At that time, we'll also be, and it's available now, a copy of the appraisal that was done on the shelter. We've given that to the Austins and the Animal Shelter Board, and so then we'll bring that to you for your direction two weeks from tonight. Also worked with the Community Development, continues to work with potential buyers for the mill property. Again, there is no recognized buyer, but Doug, the mayor and I met with another party that's looking at it and doing due diligence. So, we're all hoping that the right group comes up and that they would recognize or that they would announce themselves publicly. With all the groups that we've talked to, we've said that on the Waterfront Master Plan Committee, which starts meeting this month or next month?
Probably next month.
So, next month, that there is a table, there is a seat at the table for that. So, we're hoping that we see some progress. Well, we're seeing progress, but we've a announcement out of that. Also working with the Downtown Coalition and their director that this is, we've gotten the bids back, we've seen the draft, and this is to print a city art brochure, including some of the art pieces that are in the library, but all around the town, murals, outdoor sculpture, and things like the pieces we have. So, we're cooperating or going in partnership with the Downtown Coalition, and we've reached out to George Fox to maybe have a three-way partnership with that. Also working with the beginning of a volunteer group, it's six people right now of, that they're interested in assisting both with the funding and the planning for the renovation of the Cameo Theater. So, the next step or one of the steps here is getting the kind of complete buy-in with the Frances's, with Brian and Camille. We've laid out possible timelines, we've identified sources of money, and we've gotten a legislative interest or an area legislator who's willing, under the right circumstances, to carry something to the legislature to help fund the renovation. But we have, there's several partners, including the Main Street Program that funded half of the Chaffter's renovation. That's also available to the Cameo Theater. Just coordinated a simple thing, this is another one of our partners, coordinated a luncheon, welcome luncheon for the new Dayton City Manager, so you know that we provide some services there. And they're just our partner in the county. And so, Zoe Monahan has just taken over the reins there, so we're just getting her integrated into the family of Yam Hill Cities this coming Tuesday. Also discussed some possible options, since Public Works and Financing work together to try to help get resolved the financing of a pump station for the Veritas schools. So, they're, they have, you know, moved and they're relocating, but particularly the backup generator, that whole emergency power supply needs to be dealt with. We, the children are always protected and the kind of water that we have there, but, you know, the long-term is that we need to make sure that that pump station will serve that area. So, we were working with them this last week. Did a meet and greet with Dylan Brown. He's the new Nazarene pastor, and that's just nice to meet with any new business or a church that comes in. But particularly with the Nazarene and the faith community, that we've reached out to them of being a partner in the emergency preparedness issues, also in some of the issues around homelessness and affordable housing, and seeing how we can take that community of people and help us with some other community issues. So, did that, and that went very well. Participated in the update that Doug really stays on top of and presents back to you and just make sure things happen in the Newburgh Economic Development Strategy. So, that involves our partners at Downtown Coalition, the Chamber, some private realtors that Doug just keeps us all working on that and bringing back, and it's, that has been very successful. Participated in the Council Rules Subcommittee for the impact or the interactions of what the council looks for and communications and relationship with staff to bring that back. Then particularly for Counselor McKenna, today you received a note about that in the last year that over four and a half miles of new sidewalks have been built in the city. And of course, this is with, biggest part is the partnership with ODOT in the bypass, but those are very real sidewalks and helps with accessibility throughout the community. So, it is a priority. We didn't have a set aside for money, but by working with partners, encouraging, we have new ADA-approved sidewalks. We have a long way to go, but we're looking forward to the next year. Has some real positive things. As you saw last meeting with the College Avenue, that the sidewalk really extending from Aldercrest all the way up, you know, to the northern city limits gets us better sidewalks and accessibility up there. You also received a newsletter, we'd asked you that you read that, the employee newsletter. Has a lot of things in there, so of just keeping you connected. We also send that to the press. We know it's an internal thing, but send it to the graphic, to Susan Brandon, so she can see. You know, we brag about city employees and a lot of things. Probably one of the, just out of the blue with the city employee being the initiator of this is the new landscaping just north of the flagpole of that area there. That for a lot of years has been done with volunteers, Girl Scouts in there. Well, just one of our Public Works employees said, "Let's fix it." And so, that both the design and the planning of the little trees and the dry stream bed there, that was done by one of our employees. No consultants, no anything else, and it's just something he said, "We want to do that to make things nicer." So, we're really proud of that. The last one, Mayor and Counsel, is that you received an invitation to the Economic Forum coming up. It's sponsored by Sedcor. We are a member of Sedcor. Doug's really our contact in the middle of that, but there are funds available if you wish to attend that summit to just let Sue or me know that you want to go, and then we can make arrangements for it.
That is when?
Uh-huh.
That's when?
It's on, it's...
We have made some...
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the city manager? Thank you for side. We now move to the area of public comments. I've received no notice that anybody has anything, so we're going to open and close the public comments and somebody signed up for it, and we will now move into the consent calendar. Plague to the council. Counselor Corey?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
It's been moved to adopt the consent calendar. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Counselor Essens, second. Is there any further discussion? Question has been called for, no further discussion appearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Consent calendar is adopted. Six, zero, and one absent. And with that, then we will move to a public hearing. And the first public hearing we have this evening is an administrative public hearing that is covering... It's a public hearing, it's an administrative hearing. Yes, it's an administrative hearing. Okay, it's a public hearing. Okay? And we will be considering the adoption of three resolutions, 2018-3450, 2018-3451, 2018-3452, which are resolutions adopting new water, wastewater, stormwater rates effective January 1, 2019, and January 1, 2020. Mr. Zuck? And Debbie's going to join you. Please identify yourselves.
Deb Galardi, oh, excuse me, I'm Matt Zuck, Finance Director.
Before we proceed, this is an administrative hearing, and I'm wanting to know whether any abstentions or conflicts of interest on this hearing from the council. None appearing. Staff report, please.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you. Matt Zuck, your Finance Director, and with me is Deb Galardi, our Rate Consultant. And what I'm going to do is just kind of cover the request for council action that was in your packet, and then Deb's going to get into the details on essentially what process the Citizens' Rate Review Committee went through. As the mayor mentioned, we have three resolutions before you this evening that we're looking to take action on. And the Citizens' Rate Review Committee is a valuable committee that meets biannually and looks at the water sewer and storm rates, and this year they also included the Transportation Utility Fee, which was a new add to them. So, the Citizens' Rate Review Committee met between October 5, 2017, and March 1, 2018 to cover the waters, wastewater, stormwater, and the tough. And a lot of the different components went into those rate reviews, necessary revenue, capital improvement projects, debt service, reserves, et cetera. I'll let Deb kind of get more into detail on that. Minutes of the meetings were all, are all still on the city's website. Two sets of meetings are in your packet. By Newburgh Municipal Code, we do need to include the public hearing, which includes the recommendation from the Citizens' Rate Review Committee to the council. And they made that recommendation on March 1, and the draft minutes are in your packet. As the mayor mentioned, the rates that are being presented are to go into effect January 1, 2019, as well as January 1, 2020. And the rates that are displayed behind each resolution articulate a unique thing to the City of Newburgh, which is called out in the Newburgh Municipal Code. Having learned from this process two years ago, the rates as presented need to articulate rates in excess of a certain CPI, the Consumer Price Index. And so, there is a portion of the rates that are recommended by the Citizens' Rate Review Committee that are allowed to be referred to the voters if they exceed a certain amount. So, that's in your resolution as well, and so if you have any questions about that, we can cover that at the end. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Deb, and she will walk us through the process that she went through in presenting to the committee.
Before you start, Deb, are there any questions that you have at this point for Mr. Zuck? None appearing, Debbie.
Deb Galardi, Galardi-Rosstein Group. As Matt said, I'll walk through briefly the process that occurred over several months and mostly focus on the recommendations of the Citizens' Rate Review Committee, and I know there's a couple of the members here. The process that the Rate Review Committee goes through is basically a three-step process. Starts with establishing the financial plan, which is the multi-year forecast of revenues and expenses for each utility system individually. Then, and that establishes the overall revenue increase that's needed. So, they look at the expenses compared to the current revenues, the projected revenues under existing rates, and determine if an increase is needed to meet the projected requirements during that period, as well as financial performance targets. And then, we go through a process to basically divvy up the costs of the system based on the different customer classes in the system, and then design the actual rates, which include multiple rate components. So, that's, you know, and one reason that when we talk about the overall revenue increase, the individual rate components go up at different percentages because of the cost of service analysis and the rate design process, and we'll talk more about that. In general, there are pluses and minuses in terms of looking at the rates today and kind of some of the good news and the continued upward pressure on rates. From, on the good news side, you've had steady growth, stabilizing revenues in terms of consumption. We've had, you know, both the water and the wastewater rates are tied in some respect to consumption of water use and driven by weather conditions and various factors, but you've had a moderate customer growth and steady consumption, which has led to stronger revenues than we saw earlier in the decade. So, in addition, the city's done an excellent job of, through meeting every two years with the Rate Review Committee, to plan for the capital improvements within the period and to build some reserves to allow you to smooth rate increases, use, utilize cash to fund the improvements in the next forecast period, which all goes to help keeping those rates down in, basically in these recommended increases as well as projecting forward. The bad news, like every utility that I work with, every utility across the country, we have, we have to replace the aging infrastructure. There's a backlog, and you have a large debt burden from prior improvements for both water and wastewater that needs to be paid off. That will start to be, to drop off in the years ahead, but right now, you are kind of at a peak, I think, in terms of your debt burden. So, you need to continue to maintain the rates to pay off that, as well as continue to fund this backlog of improvements, as well as the operating, the operating costs. So, the capital requirements, the improvements to the systems do drive a big part of the rate increases. And just to touch on a couple, the overall picture and a couple of key projects, for the water system, we're looking at over $15 million of improvements over this six-year period that the committee looks at. They look at the current year plus five years. Water, we've got redundancy improvements, really important to all utilities in this region. Pump station and other distribution replacements and extensions, as well as some technology improvements. For wastewater, also looking at very sizable investment over the next six years, $16 million for wastewater, which includes improvements to reduce infiltration and inflow in the system, as well as pump station and minimal additional treatment improvements as well. For stormwater, that's a bigger number because I didn't divide it by a million, but it's, so it's a much smaller number really. It's only about $3 million, but we're also dealing with a much smaller revenue base for the stormwater utility, because that was only put in place maybe a decade ago. So, but there's water quality and drainage improvements that are needed as well for the stormwater utility. So, the recommendations, the committee looked in detail at the needed improvements. We also looked at the operating side of things, and what they've recommended is an overall increase, and these are the annual increases for water, both 4% per year, wastewater 3.5%. Stormwater is a 9%, which is a much larger percentage, but again, it's a much smaller revenue base and a much smaller rate currently, so you'll see that the rate impact of that is much smaller. Transportation Utility Fee, which was just put into place last fall, recommendation is not to increase those rates during this two-year period, that you're able to fund, that it's generating the revenue that was projected, and those, that revenue will be used to fund the highest priority improvements. So, these again are the overall increases for the systems collectively, and the individual rate component increases vary, as will then the customer bills. In addition to recommending the overall revenue increase for the systems, the Utility Rate Review Committee also made some recommendations that impact the structure of the rates and how the costs basically get shared by customers. Continuing with prior policy, the recommendation is to increase, again, the fixed charge cost recovery for both water and wastewater. Benchmark in the industry now is upwards of 40% revenue recovered through fixed charges, recognizing that most of the costs of the system are fixed, debt service, staffing costs. There are very few costs that really are variable with respect to water use. You are paying to have the system available to serve you whenever you need it, and when you decrease your water use, the costs don't go down proportionally. So, in terms of revenue stability and adequacy... So, in terms of revenue stability and adequacy, this proposal is to increase just incrementally about two percentage points, two to four percentage points for water and wastewater, but goes a long way to continuing to stabilize the revenues, which we've seen improve significantly over the past five years or so. Also importantly, a lot of discussion about what's an appropriate level of reserves. Part of why you're able to smooth the rate increases as you are and minimize the debt in the future is because you have cash that you have saved up and planned for these improvements. And so, but we don't want to deplete the reserves completely in this planning period, otherwise the next increment of investment, you will be back to being compelled to issue debt. So, a lot of good discussion in the committee about what's an appropriate level of reserves, looked at industry standards, and balance that against understanding the desire to keep rates increases at a minimum, and wanting to apply funds available. So, it's a balancing act, and I think the committee did an excellent job of considering all the various factors. So, this table then summarizes the bill impacts associated with those overall revenue increases in the left two columns. For a typical residential user who uses seven units of water, five units of water in the winter, which is then the basis for the sewer bill, you can see that at the bottom, the increase associated with these revenue increases is about $5 a month in each year, so an additional $10 over the two years. And that is just under 4% in the first year and about 4% the second year, which is actually under the rate of inflation. And I thought it would be helpful just to look at that in the context of what we're seeing nationally. The most recent survey that's available of water and wastewater rate increases is the 2016, and the small sort of grayish bar is the Consumer Price Index, and the blue is the average water rate increase that we're seeing utilities nationally, and the orange is wastewater, which is higher. You can see, water and wastewater rates are generally outpacing inflation by a multiple, two or three, I think, over a 10-year period, I think the average is about two times. But you can see that, so Newburgh is, your rate increases have moderated significantly from the double-digit rate increases that we saw some years ago. And in fact, you are now, these percentages are well below what we're seeing nationally. It's important to keep that in mind when you look at the next chart, because it's not as favorable. It has, this, it shows you the residential utility bill comparison of regional utilities, and you are the second one from the right. And so, the good news is, your rate increases are moderating while other people are still seeing significant increases, and I believe that you are going to, over time, and it's anybody's guess, whether that's two years or five years or whatever, you will move more towards the center, as other utilities face significant increases. So, it's also important to understand, when looking at these comparisons, that not all utilities face the same sorts of pressures. Yes, everyone has, is facing the need to invest in infrastructure, but there are some important cost differentials. So, a lot of the utilities for the wastewater, in that graph that I just showed you, are regional systems. Compared to single systems, you pay, you have to, you don't benefit from the economies of scale of a large, multi-jurisdiction, regional system. Most of the wastewater utilities of those comparative cities, and those were chosen because they're similar size, population, but very different when you're talking about regional versus single systems. You have had to invest a lot in infiltration and inflow mitigation, and as I mentioned, the debt burden is quite high now, but the forecast is for much, is for that to be reduced as we go forward. City policies play into effect, too, franchise fees, they differ depending on which city you're looking at, and some of these systems don't have that for the regional. And there are some differences in terms of who operates the plants, whether it's public or private. So, it's really hard to make comparisons apples to apples, and it's just important to consider some of these factors. So, I'll stop there for our presentation.
I don't think I have anything to add, Mayor and Council. That's our staff report. I do want to recognize, though, that I appreciate the Citizens Rate Review Committee, each of them dedicated some good amount of time. This, by far, is as far as a temporary committee, eight to nine meetings, and so that's longer than the Budget Committee, which, you know, deals with a whole different set of topics. So, these folks have, there's been a lot of longevity on that. One new member this last year, four of them came tonight, and so I want to thank them for being here.
Questions or comments for the staff? Councilor McKenney, Councilor McCorry.
On the slide, Ms. Galardi, that had the comparisons among the cities there, as Newburgh moves to the left on that particular chart, I noticed that we're at about, what, $120.30. As we move to the left on that chart, will we be moving to less than $100 as well, or will the other cities be coming up?
I would say the latter.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there's growing needs as the capital requirements continue. Yes, debt will drop off, but that will be replaced by the need to continue to invest, cash fund, those dollars will be, you know.
So, $120 is pretty much our mean for the next foreseeable five, six, seven years?
Well, we are, you know, we do a five-year forecast, and we are projecting similar rate increases that are slightly below inflation, because there's a lot of pass-through costs, too, and healthcare costs, everything, you know, electricity that runs the systems, chemicals, those costs do continue to increase. And so, you know, you pretty much need to raise rates to keep pace with inflation, plus you've got continued investment needs, as the master plans identify additional improvements.
So, in light of the previous slide, which was the good news slide, this particular slide is not that bad, is it?
It's all relative. Yeah, it's, the thing is that I do, you know, we have seen in the last couple of years, and I think we're going to continue to see in the near future, that your rates will go up at a lower percent than these, many of the surrounding communities, so that your position regionally will improve.
Thank you.
Councilor McCorry, Councilor Johnson, Councilor Murray.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the work the committee did on this, and I know they put in a lot of time and effort to do the best thing they can for the citizens of Newburgh, and I think in this case, they've done very well to keep the rates the way they are. The concept of Newburgh running our own system, it is more costly than the other, and I'm glad you pointed that out, for everybody to understand that. The other impact is, you know, 3.5%, 4% is just inflation, let alone what the expenses are for, possibly going to be for contractors to do I&amp;I, like you mentioned, and those kinds of things. So, I, again, appreciate it, and I think it's, you know, you've done a great job, or the committee has done a great job.
Good evening. So, I had a couple of just nuts and bolts kind of questions. I fortunately, unfortunately, am on the wastewater master plan, or was on the wastewater master plan group, and so I'm, we got good news there, and this seems like it's good news because it's under inflation, but also it's an increase. And so, I was curious, that new wastewater master plan obviously isn't ratified or done yet. When these rates were being created, and you were looking at the capital improvement projects for each of these wastewater, water, and stormwater, were you keeping one eye on that new wastewater master plan, or was this all based on the previous plan?
Ah, I love it.
It was a little bit of both, Councilor Johnson. It had projects that were in the last master plan, but also projects that could be easily swapped out for the projects that are coming up in the new master plan. So, we'll certainly be looking at that. Again, when we talk to the Rate Review Committee, we talk about the projects and the dollar amounts, but we also know that every year, that five-year plan could change about what project becomes a higher priority for whatever reasons. So, we'll keep a really close eye and make sure we're staying under those dollar amounts as we pick out the new projects from the wastewater master plan.
Thank you. Follow on? And I, just philosophically, kind of have, and this is not a criticism, it's just a request, that slide, I think, is very, I have a problem with us comparing our rates to a regional system that has multiple towns. I'm specifically looking at Wilsonville, because I know they're selling water to Tuolleton and, you know, I think even Sherwood. And so, that reduces costs for them, reduces rates. We don't get that economy of scale. We don't have a multinational wastewater and water company coming in here and running this thing, and I personally like the fact that we have local control, but I would like also in the future, as we go forward, and this is kind of directed to staff, is to find out, as our wastewater plant and water treatment plant need major repairs, if a model like that would work for us. Because I don't think, when you turn on your tap or you flush your toilet, you really, you know, pay attention to if that's local. I think it's completely different than having a local police officer or a local fire department, you know? And so, I would personally like that when we do this next year, that if we're going to compare rates to other jurisdictions, we compare, and it sounds ruder than I want it to sound, but that the rates are apples to apples, because I really feel like that's comparing, you know, social goods with, you know, Safeway, and I just don't think you get the same impact. The other question I had, if I might, Mr. Mayor, request, is that next year, when our packets come out, if we could please see the residential rates before the meeting? Because we got the revenue percentages, but I didn't see in there where we had the average homeowner rates, and maybe I missed it, but I personally would like to see that before the meeting, even if it's just a day or two before, just simply to kind of prepare me, because, you know, you look at a packet like this, and you look at those percentages, and you go, and then you see what the actual dollar amount is, and you go, okay, it's a dollar. You know, it's $5. And so, I, that would be, you know, appreciated by me, so, thank you.
To go off of what Councilor Johnson said, I think it would be very prudent of us to use ROSA in this opportunity to address the community, to understand what a regional term is. Now, in the industry that I'm in, I don't sell into regional wastewater, or into wastewater treatment anymore, but being in the pump business, selling to Clean Water Services, who covers the majority, actually almost all of Washington County, so that includes Tiger, Tuolleton, I mean, it's, so when you're looking, it's not a fair comparison, and when I've had community members email me about, why is our water bill high? Why is our sewer bill high? We have our own treatment plant, we have our own water treatment plant, everything's local, we have storage, you know, containment, you know, facilities. I grew up in Tuolleton, no treatment plant, there's just pump stations all over town that pump it all over to Durham, and that's how you get the low rate. So, like Oregon City, the tri-county area, they're going, they're going to see a massive increase in their prices, because they just renovated their treatment plant over there. And so, the slide is kind of damning in one way, because it shows us compared to Lake Oswego, right? When you're looking at, you're looking at the statistics we had about our median income in Newburgh, right? And that's what people are comparing that to. So, I think it's more fair to compare it to towns that have their own treatment plants similar size for the future. And then have that communicated over Facebook and over Instagram with our social media, so the citizens know what they're getting. So, but thank you for the community members that volunteered their time for the Rate Review Committee, because, you know, those are community members that care about it and have volunteered their time, and it's really important, so, thank you.
Councilor McKenney. I empathize with what you gentlemen were saying here, although by the time it hits Facebook, or families get together and they're talking about different things, their list of comparators is a broad list like this list here. You could maybe on this list indicate which ones are regional, which ones are whatever, but in, the conversation gets pretty hairy every once in a while, because they're talking about all of the cities in relationship to what rates are being there. But it would be a hybrid, maybe, of the two that get there. If you follow the Facebook conversation every once in a while, some of the, some of the rate rhetoric is not compared for the right thing, but it's also gets kind of inflammatory every once in a while. Why is, why is people in Tuolleton, is their rates so low compared to what they're paying here? But I think it's what I would appreciate in further reporting, is the hybrid of the two, because in so many, whether it's our police department or fire, or whatever it is, a list of comparators is real important when it comes down to there, just like tax rate. My tax bill in Newport is considerably different in Yamhill County compared to that. So, it's kind of interesting to see what's what compared to what.
Any further comments for right now? Not appearing? Thank you. We'll move. I do not have anybody signed up or provide any oral testimony at this time. I ask if we have received any written communications?
No, sir, not for these three resolutions.
Very good. Your closing remarks then, please.
Mayor and Council, this evening, we are requesting the approval of three resolutions. In front of you, and I, give me one second, I'll pull up the numbers. Resolution 2018-3450, 3451, and 3452.
Do you have any further questions of staff? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll move into deliberations, and we will take each resolution separately. The first resolution before you is 2018-3450. That's a resolution adopting a monthly rate, new monthly water rates for the City of Newburgh effective January 1, 2019, through January 1, 2020. Plague of the Council. Councilor McCorry?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2018-3450.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2018-3450. Is there any further discussion? I will be voting for this one. Question's been called for, and no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Not appearing. Motion is approved, 601. Let me do my little bookkeeping here. Take us then to Resolution 2018-3451. This is a resolution adopting new monthly wastewater rates for the City of Newburgh effective January 1, 2019, and January 1, 2020. Plague of the Council. Plague of the council. Councilor Murray?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2018-3451.
Been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2018-3451. Is there any further discussion? I hear no further discussion. The question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Resolution is passed, six, zero, one. We have before us the final resolution, 2018-3452, a resolution adopting new monthly stormwater rates for the city of Newburgh effective January 1, 2019 and January 1, 2020. Plague of the council. Councilor Corey?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2018-3452.
It's been moved and seconded. Are you getting the second? Okay. Murray. Adopt Resolution 2018-3452. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. The question has been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. The motion carries, six, zero, one. Thank you. With that, we now move to our next agenda item, which is a, a public hearing, but this one is a legislative hearing. We will be considering an ordinance, 2018-2829, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 15, Article V of the Traffic Safety Commission and the Newburgh Municipal Code. And with that, I'm going to ask if there are any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to jurisdiction. None appearing. We will have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Karen Hoffman, City Engineer, here tonight to talk about Traffic Safety Commission. The Newburgh Municipal Code addresses the establishment purpose and the duties, authorities, and decision-making process of the Traffic Safety Commission. Over the last year or so, there's been discussions regarding changing the primary staff liaison from the police department to the engineering services, and for changes to the decision-making process for more public involvement before decisions are made. Right now, the code states that a decision is made, notice is sent out to the property owners affected, then they come in to object or provide their concerns or comments, and then it, the decision could be changed at that point and then move on. So what we're recommending is some changes that set it up more of a process. If they're going to talk about it, we send out notice prior to, to the meeting, have people come in at that point, express their concerns before the commission makes a decision. So the other changes include changing the primary staff liaison to engineering services from the police department. We are actually taking on those duties right now. Clarifying the duties of the commission. Again, modify, modifications to the process for the limited traffic decision, for the city engineer to make the initial decision in accordance with policy. We've been working hard with the Traffic Safety Commission over the last two years to adopt policies to make things more consistent. Where stop signs get installed, where no parking zones would get installed, some of those types of things. There's still a process in here that if somebody didn't like that decision, they could come before the plant, Traffic Safety Commission to object and make their position known. And then clarifications for the process to appeal decisions to the city council. I'd like to note that the police authority for permits for closing streets and emergencies haven't changed, those remain the same. So the proposed changes would allow for consistency and transparency in decisions made by the Traffic Safety Commission related to its purpose, duties, and authority. And that's it.
Questions or comments for the staff? Councilor Murray?
So in here it says the fiscal impact, there's no measurable fiscal impact. So your department can handle this, taking that away from the police department without adding a head count or overtime?
We actually, that, that's correct. We, we have been able to take that on. We are not, the Traffic Safety Commission is not meeting as often as it was there for a while. We did actually, and we started this a, a year ago in the budget, we added a line item for things like traffic counts and those types of things, or if the commission decided they wanted to do a, some kind of a public information campaign or those types of things. So we added some money into the budget for that. But no, we have not had to add any bodies to that.
Any further questions of the parents?
In relations to the commission, does that include lighting of street surfaces and sidewalks?
The commission hasn't talked about lighting in particular, but certainly it's a traffic safe, could be a traffic safety issue in the right circumstances, so it could be something that ends up under their purview.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? I have nobody signed up to provide any written or oral testimony on this particular question of this ordinance being adopted, so I'm going to ask the staff, do we have any written communications?
No, sir, we have not received any for this ordinance.
With that, I'm going to close the testimony portion of the hearing, and are there any closing comments that you want to make?
Mr. Mayor, staff would recommend adoption of ordinance number 2018-2829, amending Title II, Chapter 15, Article V, Traffic Safety Commission of the Newburgh Municipal Code.
Any further questions of the staff? I'm going to close the public hearing, we'll go into deliberations, and I will say that I am going to support this particular document and this particular ordinance, but first of all, I need to know if you want to waive the second reading. It's been moved and seconded, forty seconds. To waive the second reading. So with that, we will move to the, the adoption of the ordinance, 2018-2829. I do support this, having been around Traffic Safety Commission for a number of years, even before I came on the council. This is, and is a good amending of the code to do the work of the Traffic Safety Commission. So I will be supporting this particular document. There was some angst that I had as we started into it, will we work through that, and it is, is continuing the work of the Traffic Safety Commission and making it more streamlined.
I too am, in favor of the modification of this proposal, and would like to move for the adoption of 2018-2829.
It's been moved and seconded, Corey?
You didn't vote on the waiver yet.
I'm sorry, we didn't. Shame on us. We didn't vote on the way to get to the second amendment. All in favor of waiving the, the second reading? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, City Recorder, I appreciate that. Now your motion for the adoption, and it's been seconded by Corey. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Shame on us. The question's been called for. I hear no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying awoah, we don't do that.
Point of order.
Point of order.
I'm, I didn't hear a read by title only in the motion.
Well, since it's a personal issue, you better read it like title only. It's an ordinance. It's an ordinance. Thank you. Roll call, please. Read by title only, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2018-2829, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 15, Article V, Traffic Safety Commission of, of the Newburgh Municipal Code, Newburgh Municipal Code Sections 2.15.330 to 2.15.480.
City Recorder?
Aye.
Counselor McKenney?
Aye.
Counselor Corey?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Andrews?
Aye. Motion passes, six, zero, one, absent. We didn't do a very good job. With that, we move to another ordinance. This again is a legislative hearing. This is the first reading of ordinance 2018-2826, and it's an ordinance amending the text of the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Newburgh Municipal Code to require large residential annexation or urban growth boundary expansions to include some R3 multifamily residential land. This is a legislative hearing, and with that, again, I call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to jurisdiction. None appearing. Mr. Rux?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So this is a proposal that has been long in the making, as many things are in the world of planning. So Planning Commission, City Council dealt with an annexation of land up off of North Valley Road that was proposed by Del Boca Vista. Eventually, that was approved, but subsequent to that process, the Planning Commission asked staff to initiate a Comp Plan Development Code Amendment to address two issues on a mixed policy. And by and large, that was define the word "some" and define the word "large." So this goes back to, you know, 2008, 2009, actually into 2010. So there was a, an ad hoc committee that was formed by the council who was working on the affordable housing issue. There was language that was proposed, it was brought forward through the Planning Commission and the City Council, it eventually was adopted. But in the mixed policy, there was one component of it that never provided any definitions and it never provided any development code implementation regulations. So, as I mentioned, the word "some" and "large." So at the time the Planning Commission and the City Council looked at the Dutchman Ridge proposal, both defined "large" at that time as 40 acres or more, but Planning Commission and Council did not define "some." So we spent, since May, kind of working through this. For this hearing, we did the proper notices for public places in the, in the paper, information that was up on the website, which is always a good segue to enter the entire staff report and its attachments into the record. So the Planning Commission spent a lot of time going through and trying to define "large" and "some." So they actually, they kind of gave us five elements to work out at the beginning. Should the low-density residential comp plan designation allow a mix of densities? Second one is should the LDR comprehensive plan designation allow for a mix? First one was zone, second one's is density. Should the high-density residential R3 location policy be revised to emphasize flexibility? Next one was should the words "large" and "some" be defined in the context of R3 mixed policy? And then the fifth one was should the timing change from requiring R3 at annexation also require something to be looked at at the comp plan stage? So as noted in your, your packet, Planning Commission had a variety of discussions on this topic, it was very thorough. I think they turned over all the rocks on Aggett Beach to come to a conclusion on this one. So what's important here on this slide is, is they ended up identifying the net density, not the grows. So take out the stream corridors because we have those mapped, and if we do urban growth boundary expansions, we're going to have to go through the process to map stream corridors as well. You know, it also should be, and they had a lot of conversations about, well, what if it was just one annexation and it was, what if it was two properties or three properties or four properties? So they looked at us as, if it's an aggregate, we would look at it, if it's a singular, we would look at it, but they had to have a threshold. So this is where they got to see, saying and defining "large" as being 15 net acres. So you could have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 properties all come in at one time. If they have 15 acres or more, then it would be classified as "large." You could have one property that comes in that's 20 acres, it's larger than 15, it would be classified as "large." And then for the issue about having either some high-density residential or R3, depending on the process annexation or UGB expansion, is defining that mix as being 10% of the net So these slides walk through the language that the Planning Commission identified. So under, in the comp plan, under the housing policy, under two location policies, they've identified here that while the policies in A above, and I did, it's in your report, I did put it in the slide, are desirably not absolute requirements, are, are lower priority than a goal of dispersing R3 multifamily housing throughout the city. So that's consistent, the city's comp plan talks about, not aggregating, congregating all of your multifamily in one location, but pushing it out throughout the community. Under the mixed policies, where it used to talk about low and moderate income, here the discussion in the Planning Commission came back with, it's multifamily housing, it's not necessarily about the income level, there's other policies that address income, cost burden 30%, but here, really kind of focusing, it's at the comp plan level, and so we're looking at multifamily housing as that mixed component. In K, they identified striking the word rental, and again putting in multifamily housing. You could have multifamily that's owner occupied, or you could have it rental. So trying to broaden that, but it's addressing the issue of multifamily. Then it gets a little bit more complex, and on this one is where we're talking about an urban growth boundary expansion, and when you have groups of parcels, and having designated low or moderate. R3 is for the zoning part of it, HDR is for the comp plan part of it, so we clarified that, went back to the issue of multifamily housing. And then clarified that such designations, that HDR designation shall be applied to portions of property that are most suitable for the high-density development. So it's not prescribing upfront where it should be, you need to have some flexibility in the process, but based upon that area, what needs to be brought in. And then we made sure that in the comp plan, Planning Commission said, we're going to define "large" and we're going to define "some," so it's clear and it's up front. Then we went on where you have low-density and medium-density parcels that are to be annexed, so you're already within the urban growth boundary, you're going to be annexed. Again, is that you have to have some, again, "large," and some, some, 10%, but making it very clear upfront is that there's extra steps you have to go through. We've talked about this before. So if you had some area that was brought in and it was annexed, and let's hypothetically say it was R1, now you have to have some R3. So there's an extra process, you have to request a comp plan change to go to HDR, you have to do some additional utility analysis, you have to do some additional traffic analysis. But we're putting it right in the comp plan upfront, is that you have to go through those steps in order to meet that policy of having some multifamily land.
Senator Johnson?
So I was asked a question, what, by a member of the public, if I have a large parcel and I'm outside the city limits, but I'm connected, and my well goes bad, or my septic tank goes bad, and I want to annex just to plug into city services, but I have no intention of developing my property until I, you know, buy my retirement home in Bora Bora, I still have to go through the process of the zoning and with that additional cost?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a mechanism to where we can have that not happen, or is that just automatically in the code, that's where it's going to be in the story?
There's some hardship provisions, and I'm not the expert in the staff, and Public Works is not here for that, but there are some hardship provisions that are in there, but I am not fully versed enough to lead you down a path that would be a straight.
Okay. I'm just asking. Thanks.
Senator McKenney?
Well, I know that we've done this in the past based upon the hardship recommendation of certain parcels, you know, particularly to the west and the north of us here or whatever. What...
But I know that you don't want to go into that tonight or whatever, but if asking twenty questions down the, down the road here, have we complicated the process to take care of what we have referred to as hardship cases in the past? In other words, of taking care of adjoining neighbors, I guess, in this particular case that might be experiencing difficulties.
In the past, the city of Newburgh has allowed, has wielded water to water, I'll use water as an example, to water associations for plans that are within the urban growth boundary but outside of the city and outside of the urban growth boundary. We've had, my three years here, we've had a lot of discussions about do, about that issue. We've had inquiries on people who had wells that have gone dry, but they're in a water association area, but the council made some decisions, no, you don't get to add that property into the system. You need to annex to the city. So there's, you've already, I believe, laid some of the groundwork to say, you're going to get city services? You need to annex to the city. This is now dealing with one that in Counselor Johnson's situation, if property owner X owned five acres and their well went bad and needed water, they're lower than the fifteen-acre threshold, so they could apply for annexation. If you were, their property was sixteen acres in size, then they'd have to go through this step. Now, when we looked at this, we shared maps with the Planning Commission on this, and there are some areas up to the northeast that parcel sizes are fifteen acres and larger. You could have some areas to the south, kind of southeast, that would exceed that size. You've then got a bunch of properties up Chehalis Drive that on average are about an acre in size. But we've had a lot of inquiries from property owners about the ability to get water and sewer service. That's a separate issue of the cost to be able to get water and sewer across the creek, Highway 240 Bridge, and then up Chehalis Drive. And so the Planning Commission, when they looked at those maps and looked at that information, they came down with the fifteen-acre number. Could it have been twelve? Could have. Could it have been ten? Could have. Could it have been eighteen? Could have. But on the data that we were able to provide them, they, they landed on fifteen.
Follow on?
I can remember the council taking actions based upon hardship to where some expense of laying the pipe to some of these parcels north and west there. The thinking was, is to make sure that that family dwelling had water to cook with, water to shower their kids, water to wash clothing, water to, to do some of that. I, I know that we've done that in the past based upon hardship without a discussion about annexation and/or further development down there. So this is not clear in our minds with, based upon past practices.
Counselor, I think in part, what we're talking about is, when you, I think we're talking a bit apples and oranges. Is, you're asking about, well, what about hardship? And I've indicated, I am not the right staff person. We need to have our Public Works Director or City Engineer here to talk about that. What the Planning Commission was looking at, based upon a past land use action, is how do you implement this mixed policy to have some multifamily land at the time you did annexations? That conversation ballooned and expanded to, well, what about at time of urban growth boundary expansion? That's really the time you should be, when you're expanding your UGB, that's the time to lay out your land use pattern of what you want, so people know upfront. So they looked at it and said, in aggregate, if you have fifteen acres or more and you are either coming into the urban growth boundary, or you're going to annex, is that you have to have some multifamily land. So I think that's in part a little bit separate from the issue of hardship. We're looking at future development patterns and how those development patterns should or should not occur.
Follow on?
I get all of that. But based upon future decisions, which might have to be made by the council, are we going to create a conflict for the city attorney to deal with, or other departments to deal with, when it comes to hardship in relationship to this? So I don't, I don't know whether, the nature of my question is, is there an unintended consequence of creating a, a future conflict based upon hardship?
Counselor Eisen?
I had a conversation with one of the larger developers in our town, and I said, is it going to be hard for you to provide this R3 mix? And, because we want mixed housing. And he said, it's going to be hard for me to provide housing, any housing, because of the costs that are involved right now. And I said, well, what do you think the problem is? And he said, I think we're using social engineering to accomplish housing, put multiple housing in with other housing, which is fine, but it shouldn't be through the building code. I don't know how you do it. But I, that's my problem with this. I really like the concept. I appreciate all the work, because I know this was what happened ten years ago, and they thought they had it figured out. But I still have a problem with whether or not we're using the right method to get there and the increased cost. As you say up there, we're going to have to include some designated R3 zone lands, and have to be consistent with the policy of distributing R3. And that means more studies, more traffic studies makes the project more expensive. And we're trying to make the housing less spendy. And I guess the housing is not going to be, and the other thing is with a, it's an acronym, affordable housing is even a real, realistic consideration. And I thought somewhere in this, and I guess that's where I'm really getting to, is there something that we, where we're going to raise some taxes so that the developers would be able to, I think that they said their property, they could build something for two hundred thousand, and we need to, to make it affordable, last to be a hundred and eighty thousand. Is this, this is not included in there that I see in this. Is this going to really work, what we're trying to do here? That's my question. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. So this, Doug Rux again. So first of all, this is, this is a proposal to change the Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code, not the building code. The building code regulates how you physically build. Council directed the staff, based upon proposals that came forward from the Housing Newburgh Group, which they brought nine. You identified four. One of those four is to evaluate the possibility of a construction excise tax at one percent, which would generate somewhere probably between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars a year. There are some statutory limitations on how you can use some of those funds, but those would be funds that you could partner with developers in order to provide housing that is more affordable, affordability has a continuum across there. That's not part of this proposal at all. This was specifically to address the issue about the lack of clarity in the policy, in the Comprehensive Plan that was done about eight, nine years ago, and nobody could determine what the term "large" and "some" meant when you were going through an annexation. So that, so this is much narrower. I think Counselor, think of it, is we've been talking a lot about housing affordability, and there are a lot of different pieces to the puzzle. This is one piece of a multi-piece puzzle that we're working on right now. Got Housing Newburgh things to implement, the first four, then they'll, we'll come back to, and we'll talk about others. There'll be new things that's coming up. We're going to be talking about accessory dwelling units from state legislation, Senate Bill 1051 is going to be coming forward. So there are different things that are occurring all at the same time, addressing the issue about housing affordability.
I, yes. I follow on. Yeah, I, so this is separate from that. That is all part, there's a bunch of pieces that are supposed to go together, and somehow this is supposed to work at some point. But this just addresses the way it was written. We originally passed it at forty acres, but you guys have done a lot of work, and you've figured out, well, we wouldn't end up with much of a multiple housing if we went only forty acres of the parcel, because there's not that many forty acre parcels. So we've brought it down to something smaller so we could end up with more housing. Is that correct?
The Planning Commission in their discussions looked at it, and they started by looking at the issue of annexation. When you annex, what is large and what is some? So they started from where they were at when they originally, on the land use application, said large was forty acres. Council looked at it and said, council said large is forty acres. Planning Commission came back and said, this all needs to be fixed, because we didn't fully do what we should have done eight years ago, nine years ago. Staff, go fix this. Bring us back ideas. Through that process, they've now come back to you and said, no, we believe that large means fifteen acres, either an individual parcel or an aggregation of parcels that are going to be annexed. Oh, and by the way, if we do, if somebody came in the door and requested a urban growth boundary expansion, or the city in the process that we're in, is we should also be clear in the policy in the Comp Plan now, is that you need to have some mix, and you need to have some R3 when you bring in residential land. So we said, okay, we understand that. We will put that in there as well.
Counselor Johnson?
I have a process question for, for Doug. If we were to table this until we had a full council, would that, would that, well, I'm, I'm asking a question. I'm not making a proposal. I'm just asking a question.
All right.
This one is not time-sensitive. We don't have a mandated date that we have to have something done by. So in the municipal code, and this is where there was a missing link before, is that we had no language, no implementing criteria in our development code. So Planning Commission developed the language that's on your screen, and I know you don't want me to read it to you, but, because it mirrors, by and large, what's in the Comp Plan. And it includes identifying what's large and what some means. That's the end of my presentation.
One piece of clarification, I think I want to bring the city attorney in here. If you remember at all, when we have a hardship, one of the, one of the criteria that we use is that we will, we would, we would extend the water in that figure, but there was a, there was a requirement that at some future point, there would be an annexation. An annexation was not part of the extension. Can you, can you help me out on that a little bit, the city attorney? Do you need your recollections on that?
Truman Stone, city attorney. It's been quite a while since I've looked at that, and I, my memory is this, and I just had another birthday here recently, so my memory is, and that seems to be continually, continually changing as I age. There was a point in time where the council made some policy decisions about under what circumstances water would be extended under those hardship provisions. There also seem to be, post that policy decision, there seem to be instances where the city granted hardship exemptions that were in violation of the policy adopted by the city. So we, there was some discussion a few years ago when we had some hardship requests coming in, whether we were going to follow the adopted policy, or whether we were going to handle them, handle the requests in the way that the city had done, which was contrary to that policy. And I'd be happy to dig up that research and send that back out to the council, because I think it may be relevant for the council to look at that and decide, is that still the council's policy, for one. But you're correct in that hardship waivers were granted with the property owner agreeing to annex at the earliest opportunity that they could annex to the city. But I think that was prior to the state statute changing, that made annexation easier without a vote of the citizens as well. So that changed, number one. And two, we were talking about parcels that were not contiguous to the city limits, but were either in the UGB or URA, or even some that were beyond that, but were able to be And those, we, there were agreements to annex when the annexation was possible, but the possibility of those annexing is a long ways down the road when they're not even in the urban growth boundary. But I'd be happy to dig that research out and resend it to the, the council. I think there are, there are two, there are two different questions, though. One is, can you qualify for a hardship exemption as the city has set that up? But two, if, if the only way for you to get water under that policy is to annex now, because annexation now is possible, then you would have to go through this land use process, including the zoning requirement. Now, that doesn't mean they'd have to build houses and apartments on their property that day. They could still live in the existing house, but it would have to come in, having been subdivided, including, you know, if, if they met that criteria, it would have to come in with some R3, with the ten percent R3, if that's what the council ultimately decides. So I talked for a good long time. I think I answered your question, but you'll tell me if I didn't.
You did well. You did well. Counselor Murray?
As much as I want to spend the rest of my evening with all of you wonderful people, I think, I think we can, we can look at hardship. We can have staff come back with that information. But what's really, what we're looking at tonight, what Doug has repeatedly has mentioned, is tonight, we're going with the, the definitions that we asked staff to come up with, and what the Planning Commission came up with. So, you know, in an effort for our council goals, along with the Comp Plan, with the, with all, everything all summed up, what we're looking at tonight is adding definitions which we didn't have before. So that's really what we're making the decision on tonight. So I just want everybody to remember to go back, pull ourselves back in. I know we're passionate about all kinds of things, but let's go back to what we're really trying to do is say thank you for going out and doing this work. Now we have definitions. Now we need to pass that so we can move on to the next item.
We're not fighting to deliberate yet. Counselor Lieutenant?
Well, I appreciate your concern to move the meeting along, but it wasn't, it wasn't us that brought up the idea of hardship. The conversation about hardship has interjected into this conversation, and would this decision tonight make hardship discussions easier or harder in the, in the future? So I would be uncomfortable with making a decision tonight.
We're not into deliberations yet, gentlemen. We're not into deliberations yet.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to deliberate the subject. We, Mr. Rux introduced the, the hardship business.
I don't think Mr. Rux introduced the hardship question. He did not. Counselor Eisen?
I think we shouldn't be deliberating at this point.
I think we shouldn't be deliberating at this point, you know, we've been talking about it, there's, there's not really questions, we've got our answers, pretty much, we maybe...
We're still in a hearing, we still, we're not at deliberations, okay?
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, point of order, we're not...
So if there are further questions regarding the ordinance before you, there's been an interesting question raised. Is there anything further that you have, and we have questions for staff at this point? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
You may.
Because I think I may have seen a typo and probably be good to fix that. Yeah. Under the use policies, which would be page four of the ordinance, the mixed, mixed location...
Page four?
Mixed policies. Where you changed it, under K, to multifamily housing from rental? The rest of that sentence says to meet the needs of renters. So it's, it's K under the mixed policies, where the first term of supply of rental housing was changed to multifamily housing, but the remainder of the sentence says dispersed throughout the city to meet the needs of renters, which probably would be inconsistent
Doug Rux again. What we brought forward is what the Planning Commission developed and recommended.
Is this, is, is this the piece in Exhibit A that you're referring to on page four? Yeah, A, A like... And we, I was trying to catch up with you, and then say it again, the city shall encourage an adequate supply of...
So it's changed from rental to multifamily housing and that, but the rest of the sentence says dispersed throughout the city to meet the needs of renters.
Any questions for the panel? Is there any, anything further for staff? I have nobody signed up to provide any oral testimony, do we have any written testimony received?
No, sir, I have not received any written testimony on this ordinance.
Thank you. With that, is there any further questions for staff? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and this is a first reading. Do I hear a motion to waive this second reading? Then, this will then proceed then to a second reading, which will be scheduled when? In the absence of a waiver, we're going to go to a second reading. So you would bring the agreement back?
Given, packet's already done, probably May 7th.
May 7th?
Um, actually not.
Is May 7th a reasonable target date, or the second meeting in May?
It'd be more reasonable, given the other things that I have to get done.
The second meeting in May?
The first meeting in May, May 7th.
Would be better than the second meeting in May?
Yes.
Okay. Then with that, then this, we are closed and we move on to the, the next public hearing. Because there is no waive, there's no, no waiving in the second reading.
No, I move that we waive the second...
Second. Why don't you make the motion when I asked for it? That's just arbitrary. So it's been moved to second and it's moved, waived the second reading. Is there any further discussion? None appearing? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying aye.
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 Three, 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 so the motion fails. Question mark. Thank you, we move on to the next one. Anybody want to raise your places? We are now at a legislative hearing for ordinance 2018, 23, 2830. This is an ordinance amending the New Garden Municipal Code to reduce the front building width line, front building width line, in R1 zones from 35 feet and in, 235 feet, I'm sorry, and in R2 zones to 25 feet. This is a legislative hearing. Again, I'm calling for extensions, conflicts of interest, or objections to jurisdiction. None appearing? Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor.
Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So the background on this proposal, oh, into the entire staff report and its attachments into the record. This one was initiated by the city council, by Resolution 3435, back in January of this year, 2018. The request originally came from Del Boca Vista, the submitted staff and brought forward to the city council. The, we went through the proper noticing requirements, as noted in the report and on the screens, with website posting in four places and publishing this hearing in the prepared graphic. So in the development code, we have some conflicting, it can be perceived as some conflicting language. So what we have here on the lot width at the public street in the municipal code, in chapter 15, is that we say that you have to have 25 feet of frontage on a public street. When we get to the lot width at the front building line, under chapter 15, it says in the R2 and the R3 zone, you have to have a minimum width at the front building line. So think of a building, you've got the street, curb, planar strip, sidewalk, some distance back is that building. At that building front plane, parallel with the street frontage, is you have to have a 30-foot width. So we start 25, and we go back, and now you have to have a 30-foot width. In the R1 zone, you have to have a 50-foot width at that building line. And so we provided the definition out of the municipal code, that the front building line means a line extending parallel width and abutting the front of the closest building to a front line, front line being that to the street. So in the proposal that was submitted to us, there were some examples of a typical block length. Now, the maximum block length that we allow is 800 feet, but a typical would be 400 feet. And so in that scenario, if you could get 10 houses on either side of a block, because this is the issue the Planning Commission have been talking about, is about parking. And so we knew that was going to come up, and we went forward and went through the Planning So on each side of the street, you could get six on-street parking spaces, but that's not including anything you may have streets that may terminate at the end and wrap around, where you may not have any driveways, which provides some additional graphics in the packet and further explain that. So we provided some guidance to the applicant on this one, to say, well, for on-street parking, because we don't have anything specifically in the transportation plan or in the development code about what's the dimension of a parking space out in a residential area. So we gave them guidance, based on conversations with our engineering department, of 18 to 20 feet for, for a basically parallel parking stall. Now, what this proposal does not do, it does not change the minimum lot size. So the minimum lot size is still 5,000 square feet in R1, it's still 3,000 square feet in R2. It doesn't change the lot coverage requirements. And so we've listed out what those coverage requirements are. So at R1, it's still at 30%, and if all the structures are one-story, you get 40%. You gotta add the minimum parking, or the parking coverage in that, stays the same. You get a combination of R1 at 60%, you get a combination in R2 of 60%. So it keeps all those the same. What this slide represents is the language that is proposed to be changed in the code. So what it says is that each lot in R2 zone shall have a minimum width of 25 feet at the front building line. So think about that 15-foot setback to the structure, 20 feet to the garage, at that 15-foot line, if that's where the building line is at, is that your lot width could be 25 feet. That would match the lot width that you're required to have out of the street at 25 feet. In the R1 zone, the proposal is to go to a 35-foot width. So if you have a building setback 15 feet from the front, and there's 20 feet to the garage, at that 15 feet, you'd have 35 feet, so a little wider than the 25 feet. But what this does is, think of it, what you typically see is that one or two-story home, it's got a side-by-side double-car garage, right now it's all 50 feet, you've got two parking spaces that are up front. This leads to a little bit different design concept, where if the lots are a little bit narrower, you may or may not have that side-by-side garage, you could have a single-car garage, you could have a double-deep garage, it gets you potentially a little bit deeper backyard than what you might get out of the standard. It, it may lead to helping meet our, in our R1, our 4.4 dwelling units per acre density. We haven't been pushing up against that envelope. The numbers we saw in the past, we were, you know, down in the 3.5, 3.6 dwelling units per acre. That was pre-change, where we went from 7,500 square foot lots to 5,000, and 5,000 to 3,000 in the R2 area, areas of town. So the applicant provided some examples of how a different kind of development pattern might look. You're gonna see a vision clearance triangle that's up on the right-hand side, if you're looking here, if you're looking over here. But these are basically, concept is narrower homes, driveway, garage, your backyard, kind of concept. This is also representing kind of the parking. So you could get some parking in between driveways, you could get parking on these side streets where you don't have driveways going into homes, so that picks up some parking at those locations. So this is in the R2 zone. Here's an R1 zone, representing some of the similar things of, you still get some on-street parking, you've got, you've still got to provide two off-street parking spaces, it still allows some parking over on the side street. This is kind of looking at a different perspective in an R1 of a block. And so then you get into issues about spacings and patterns of driveways in order to create parking areas along that street frontage, potentially, and parking along the sides as well. And here's one in R2, here's another representation of what you might be able to get in R2. And then there are a couple of photographs of some other communities. One is up in Portland, the other one is in Beaverton, looking at, again, some of these narrower lots than what you typically have. Now, from a development perspective, if you had a narrower lot in an R1 or an R2, doesn't mean that developer will do that, they might consider it, but if they're looking for kind of that standard, let's say 2,000 to 2,400 square foot home, that's two stories, it's got a double-car garage and so forth, they may go wider than the minimum, depending on what kind of market niche that they're trying to fit and meet for their particular product.
Councilor Johnson?
I hope to gosh I'm not standing on the landline again.
I did not hear a thing you said.
Good. Doug, our earlier conversation with the Planning Commission regarding residential parking, this proposal, does this hem us in in any of the solutions we're looking for, or the proposals that we're thinking about when it comes to residential parking standards?
I'm not sure that it hems us in. I think I would answer that is that the Planning Commission looked at this, and they came up with a recommendation to the council to approve it. So though they haven't, as Chair of the Planning Commission indicated this evening, they haven't found an answer to the issue that they've identified yet. Don't know when, if, and where they will find that particular answer.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Councilor McKenney? If the lots are that narrow, there's no room for a car at the curb, correct?
It depends upon where, how you address the issue of the layout. It gets to where you position the driveways. So could you get a parking here, could you get parking here, 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 here? Yes. Could you kind of repeat that pattern on the other side of the street? Yes. If this was a subdivision and it had the next mirror of the block, theoretically, you would have parking over on the ends as well. Each unit, separate section of the code, requires that you have to have, you have to provide two off-street parking spaces. In this kind of concept, you have theoretically one in a garage and one in front. Doesn't mean that you can't have a double stacked, two in the garage and one in front.
What about the driveway? Garage and driveway?
I think under this concept, that's where you'd start, you'd have one in the garage and one in the driveway.
What a smart thought.
And that's, you know, that's another issue that's sitting out there, I mean, people are talking about autonomous vehicles, you know, and will they come? It keeps coming up?
Any further questions for staff at this time? We do have somebody that would like to provide some testimony, and with that, I'm going to call on, is this an andor or an?
An.
An, all right. Jessica Kane and Angela Netechuk, please come forward. I have one application, but I'll, I'll give you no more than 10 minutes. Ivy, introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening, I'm Jessica Kane with Del Boca Vista.
And I'm Dan Zerich, also with Del Boca Vista. At this point, we would concur with staff and be open for any questions. We believe the application speaks for itself, and I'm happy to answer any questions that
Any questions for either Jessica or Dan? Councilor, Assistant Councilor, sorry.
Is this about the parking that we just saw? Since I know you guys are developers, or handle that, have you seen any of these and how have they worked?
As, as in the application, we did provide a couple of communities where it does work. If you look at Figure 2, with regard to R1 zoning, you'll see that there are 22 houses in a typical 400-foot block, and there are 26 off-site parking spaces available if the driveways are spaced accordingly. In Figure 4, with R2 zoning, you'll see that there are 30 houses in a typical 400-foot block, and with that, you have 28 on-street or off-site parking spaces. This is in addition to the required parking spaces that are on-site via the garage or driveway. So we believe that this does work in other communities, we believe it provides an opportunity for developers to provide a variety of product, and allows for some larger backyards, which people are often seeking, because, again, we're not seeking the lot size reduction, we're just seeking the building width line. And really, the motivation for this, when looking at the... And really, the motivation for this, when looking at the code changes from 7,500 to 5,000 square foot for R1, and 5,000 to 3,000 square foot for R2, this issue wasn't considered at that time. The lot sizes were reduced, but the building width line was not. And so we think it just naturally follows that this should be recommended for approval.
I would like to enter to Counselor Corey.
I think the question has been answered, but I want to ask directly. Is it your intention to build parking for vehicle in the garage, vehicle in the driveway, and on-street parking? And your intention is to allow for on-street parking several parking spaces, is that correct?
We believe that neighborhoods are more desirable when you can provide on-street parking. So yes, we would maximize the ability to do so. Again, the code doesn't require it at this point, and so to make a commitment, you know, it makes the neighborhood desirable, it makes it more marketable, and we're committed to, you know, continuing in that regard.
Counselor Johnson, Counselor McKenney?
Hi. The price point for some of the examples we saw in the pictures, those narrow houses, what rough price point? I'm not asking about your project specifically, I'm just curious about those types of projects. Where do they usually come in, pretty wide range?
Well, with regard to the building width, so the width of the houses, the houses aren't less in square footage, so with pricing-wise, it's probably not particularly different. Pricing really is dependent upon the market materials, cost of construction. What this does allow is some flexibility. When we're developing lots, if you have a 50-foot, you know, and you can't get a 50-foot at the end, then, you know, here, we have a 35-foot, maybe we could get another house at the end, and then it does average out to make things more affordable. I hate to say that word, because it seems to pop up, but it definitely is an indicator, there's a lot of popularity. We built two houses on Sixth Street that are the 25-foot width lots. Those were allowed because they were originally platted that way by the city of Newburgh long ago, they're called shadow plats. And so the product was extremely popular, those sold in the, you know, low to mid 300s, to give you an idea on Sixth Street. And so I think it just allows some flexibility of product and allows us to address some other markets that we aren't seeing in this community at this point.
Counselor McKenney?
Have you guys proposed CCNRs and homeowners associations? In any of the developments that you've been dealing with, in other words, to get a car in the garage, have you considered HOAs and other things like that to make these communities more desirable?
Frankly, homeowners associations are highly undesirable by buyers. They tend to increase costs, monthly maintenance fees, homeowner association dues. We find that they tend to create some turmoil, and so we try to steer away from HOAs. We do put in place CCNRs. Those are enforceable to the extent that the neighbors want to enforce them against their other neighbors. So, you know, I think that, to be frank, that's our answer, is we try to avoid both, but we understand that there's often a need for CCNRs, given the type of development we're doing. HOAs come in effect when we have private stormwater systems or private tracts that need to be maintained by the neighborhood, and then we're forced to put those vehicles into place.
Or, in a CCNR, can you make those kinds of stipulations about a car in a garage? Hard to enforce, you could make the stipulation, but very difficult.
I think it would be difficult, yeah, I mean, this is my opinion. I think it would be difficult to enforce, you know. Do you have to park a car in the garage, or, you know, how do you enforce that? And then who is going to enforce it? Again, it would be, if Dan and I are neighbors, and Dan's not parking his car in his garage...
Which he never does.
He never does. Then I have to file a lawsuit against Dan to enforce those CCNRs. And so it's impractical. The city has, you know, the ability to define what parking spaces are and aren't under the code, and so I think that that's the better vehicle for that than trying to use an HOA or CCNRs to do it.
He does drive a short car, so it'd be easier to put out.
No comment.
Mr. D'Anticci, anything you have? Your side, Doug?
Well, I'm here for moral support. I take advantage of the short jokes, but other than that, I'm just here to help out.
He gets it at the office, too, it's my...
Back to the set. Any further questions? Thank you, guys, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Do I have everybody else signed up for oral testimony? Did we receive any other written communications?
No, sir, I have not received any written communications for this ordinance.
All right. Any final comments, Mr. Rux?
Doug Rux, community development director. Final comments would be a recommendation to adopt ordinance 2018-2830 as recommended by the planning commission, resolution number 2018-337.
I'm going to close the hearing. This is the first reading. Trying to keep me on track this time. This is the first reading, the chair would entertain a motion for a second reading. Uh, wait a second. The chair would entertain a motion to waive the second reading. It's been moved. It's been seconded, Corey. To waive the second reading. Is there any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same side. That is 5-1, motion passes. So, waive is, passes, so that's 5-1-1, okay? We are now into the second reading, and play to the council. Counselor Harrison?
I would move approval to adopt the ordinance number 2018-2830 as recommended by the planning commission, resolution number 2018-337.
Huh?
Is that what I'm in the wrong spot?
No, you want, if you want to move this ordinance, it's 28-18, 28-30, and read by title only.
What you said.
Do I have a second? It's been seconded, Murray. Any further discussion?
Counselor McKenney? I intend to vote no on this particular measure. And the reason is this, is that this is one of the unintended consequences of reducing lot sizes. And when we went from 7,000 to 5,000, or whatever, I think at this particular, you've probably heard me say this at that particular point in time, is that I think it's not exactly the best fit for people that are trying to buy homes in Newburgh, where they're hoping to get out here and breathe a little, have some space around them, and do some of the other stuff. The market has kind of made things difficult for you. It would have been so nice to be able to develop a neighborhood based upon 7,000-foot lots rather than some of the others, but your cost of buying the land wouldn't have been any different, I'm sure, than some of the others. So maybe this is good for you. But I am planning to vote no, because I think this is one of those unanticipated consequences of a poor decision in the past.
Counselor Harrison?
I've seen these work quite well, and even, even less so, but they work. We keep talking about affordable, anything in the 300 range is now about as close as we're going to get, it's something somebody can afford to buy. So I think that's what we're trying to accomplish, and that's the reason I'm voting for this.
Counselor Corey, Counselor Murray, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I plan on supporting the ordinance, and I think the reason why this has changed is because we were trying to work with the affordable housing committee on getting price points down. We didn't quite make the price point that we wanted, aiming at 250,000 is what we kind of were looking for. It now sounds like maybe 300,000 is where we're at. And I don't know that we can do anything about that, but I would love to see the price point a little lower, because we are allowing the extra parking, smaller width lots and those kinds of things. We're doing our part to try to get the price point down. So I think the council, at least, and the affordable housing committee and planning commission have all, are all working together to try to get there, and it seems like we're behind the eight moles when it comes to the price point, but I'm going to support the ordinance.
Counselor Murray?
I agree with Counselor Corey. Going for a walk on the south end of town, South College Street, and walking on Sixth Street, and also, I was looking at all the houses, I love looking at all the old houses, and all of a sudden I stumbled upon these two beautiful skinny homes. And I just couldn't believe how big they were, and how much space there was, and they were kind of hidden behind a grove of trees. And I thought, that is brilliant. You have this neighborhood of old homes, some of them are falling apart, and you can get two homes on that size a lot, and they're beautiful. And I'm going to support it, because I think that Del Boca Vista and the Willcut family, they're invested in our community into building homes, and we're not driving the price. I mean, the people moving into our town, who are creating the market, is what's driving the price. So we can't discourage our local builders, who are trying to support the community, by not working with the tools that are here. So I'm in support of this.
Counselor Johnson?
I'm going to support this ordinance, simply, two reasons. One, to me, it's almost a bookkeeping item, because we have already reduced the lot sizes, which happened before I got here, and now we're just marrying up other parts of the code to, you know, match up with the lot sizes that we've determined. And the second thing is, we, in our quest to increase our urban growth boundary, reducing lot sizes and doing things like this, is something that's going to help us in the long run, go back and say, "Look, we're not just trying to gobble up as much farmland as we can, we are reducing lot sizes. We're looking at ordinances like we talked about earlier. We're doing things to try to maximize the use of our property." And the nice part about it is that, you know, from what we heard tonight, the two kind of test cases that we have that were shadow planted, were popular. And so I think that's even better. So that's why I'm going to support it tonight, is it's what the market wants, and also I think it helps us with our long-range goal of increasing urban growth boundary.
Any further discussion?
I too will be supporting the motion. I think the key for me was that we have flexibility, and we're not reducing, actively reducing lot size, which is changing the configuration of the lot size. I used to drive a big pickup, and now I drive a smaller import, but I still get from point to point. Same idea. Any further discussion? Are you ready?
Call for it.
Question's been called for? Read by title only.
Ordinance number 2018-2830, an ordinance admitting the Newburgh-Minnesota code to reduce the front building width line in R1 zones to 35 feet and in R2 zones to 25 feet.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Corey? Counselor McKenney?
No.
Counselor Esson?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes. Motion passes 5-1-1. And with that, then, we have, my bookwork caught up here. We move to council business, and I have only one item on council business, and that's my item, and that is, this Friday, there's a League of Oregon Cities regional meeting in Salem at the League of Oregon Cities. How many are attended? There was a question that went out earlier on, from, did that come from you and Rose?
Not for me, but the meeting's at 4:00.
It's at 4:00.
At their offices in Salem, and they just asked us to respond. So they got to have a count for who's coming.
Who's all going?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, how late does that go?
Four to six.
Four to six.
Yeah, first hour is regional, and then the second hour, I think, is legislative update.
Okay. I may attend late. I'll be there, but I'll be late.
That's room 113 at the...
Newburgh office?
Newburgh office.
Okay. I'll be there, but I'll be late, I probably won't shut until 4:45.
I'll email them for you.
Okay. And if you could send me the particulars again, I'm sorry, thanks.
And the mayor will be going.
So too. Okay.
Thank you. Counselor, or, city manager?
Mayor, council, can I talk after the meeting?
So you didn't...
I know, I'm sorry, I forgot. Just for Corey, Esson, and Johnson, I want to, you got an email about the budget committees, and I want to just confirm with you whether you can make those or not, that's all, with the three of them. I can do it after, Mayor. You told, okay, so then it just leaves Corey and Johnson on...
I didn't...
Oh, I didn't, that's what we're just asking, so. So could you resend it to me, please? What, or did you do it over the phone, you just told?
No, the phone read them.
Okay. If you just send that to me, then I'll update mine, please, again, resend it.
Can I make more?
What's that? Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I already have yours. We're good. Budget committee. Okay. Done, Mayor.
Okay, good. Anything else that wasn't previously voted? City manager?
Who's there?
Sue?
Mine isn't, who wasn't on?
Oh, well, I think it's kind of working. Mary just asked me if you want to tour dispatch or come sit in to just coordinate those requests through her, and I sent you an email to let you know.
Anything else?
If you haven't signed the cards for the dispatchers, they're going to be over here, and then they'll be in my office, and if you could sign them by Monday, then I'll take them to dispatch for, I think, I got Matt and Mike, you got maybe halfway through, so if you have a minute before you can go tonight, that would be great. But I still need Stephen and Denise, who Denise is going to sign them Wednesday when she gets back.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion's been seconded.